Are you ready, Susan?
I am.
Okay, it looks like it's nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. If we could call the meeting to order and all stand for the salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, let it be known that all commissioners are here and present today. Are there going to be any agenda changes?
No.
Okay. And so now we will go to the public for anybody that has anything they would like to discuss that is not on today's agenda. Anybody have anything they'd like to say this morning? Okay. Then we will go right into consent agenda, which there is none, so we'll take it to item E, public hearing. Scott, looks like you're going to be the presenter on this one.
All right. This is 2017-141, Appeal of Medical Cannabis Dispensary Employment Ineligibility. The appellant, Matthew Cohen, is appealing the Planning Department's determination of eligibility for employment by a medical cannabis dispensary. As part of his hiring process by Green Gold Cultivators, a background check was performed by the Sheriff's Office. The results of the background check contain information regarding Mr. Cohen's criminal history that the Sheriff's Office determined to be disqualifying factors. The Planning Department and Mr. Cohen were notified of this decision, and upon review, the Planning Director concurred with the recommendation of the Sheriff's Office and determined Mr. Cohen ineligible for employment by Green Gold Cultivators. Mr. Cohen subsequently filed an appeal to this determination on October 24th. Section 17.91.040D of the county code requires a background check to be performed for any employee of a medical cannabis dispensary. It states that the -- it states, "The Planning Director, in consultation with the Sheriff of Calaveras County, shall conduct a background check of any applicant for a dispensary permit, administrative use permit, or employee thereof, and based on that and other relevant information, determine whether to issue a medical cannabis dispensary administrative use permit." So for a medical cannabis dispensary use permit, three measures standing, all employees need to -- our employees are subject to this background check requirement. The appeal letter that Mr. Cohen submitted begins by questioning the general validity of the background check itself. First, he states that the birth date is recorded incorrectly on the report. It's supposed to be May 17, 1981, instead it's recorded as 1971. However, Mr. Cohen, he does not dispute any other information contained within the report, and as such, there's no reason to question the validity of the report's criminal history, just conceding that a typo did occur, changing an eight to a seven. The appeal letter then states, "The report is printed on the top, 'Do not use for employment, licensing, or certification purposes.'" But regardless of what may be written on the top of the report, the county is allowed to perform a background check in compliance with this code section, as long as the practice does not discriminate against race, natural origin, color, sex, religion, disability, genetic information, or age. Mr. Cohen has not objected on any of these grounds, and as a result, we feel that we are complete in our rights to use the background check. Mr. Cohen's letter continues by outlining his past criminal infractions. He mentions petty theft convictions in 1989 and 2001, violation of restraining order in 2001, possession of stolen property in 2002, giving a false name to a peace officer in 2007, and being convicted of disturbs by loud and unreasonable noise connected to a domestic dispute in 2011. Mr. Cohen then states that he has learned his lessons, and that these infractions should hold little weight due to their being, in most cases, over a decade in the past. He continues saying that he leads a law-abiding life, as evidenced by currently holding a valid guard card that was issued by the State Bureau of Security and Administrative Services, which itself requires him to pass a background check. The Sheriff's Office considers convictions related to property theft, receiving stolen property, disturbing the peace, providing false identification, and domestic disputes relevant to the security and the safety of a dispensary and the public. For this reason, Mr. Cohen was determined to be ineligible for employment by a dispensary. The Planning Director has concurred with the Sheriff's Office's recommendation upon review of the relevant information. Mr. Cohen's explanations of his infractions do not change his criminal history, and the factors therein that the Sheriff's Office has determined to disqualify him from employment by Green Gold Cultivators, and as a result, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017-104 to deny Mr. Cohen's appeal.
You just mentioned the word cultivator, and I -- that threw me.
Huh? Did I say cultivator?
I thought so.
Oh, Green Gold Cultivators.
Oh, that's the --
Yeah.
Okay. You were going so fast.
That's the dispensary. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay.
These Green Gold Cultivators, do they already have an administrative use permit?
They do.
Okay. How do we get from 17.91.040D that deals with determining whether to issue an administrative use permit to a finding that a potential employee is ineligible for employment?
We've had to interpret the code since all employees have to go through a background check, that the license of the dispensary would be in jeopardy if they were to hire someone who didn't pass the background check. And it's -- I would grant it to poorly worded provision of the code, and a little confusing, you know, it's one thing to do it up front, but, you know, employees change over time, and I don't think it was the intent of the code to say, "Well, we'll pass the background check at the first time," but then, you know, anyone else could come in and work there who would not necessarily be able to pass the background check. So we have applied this provision of the ordinance so that subsequent employees, and this, we've gone through this in several cases with other, the dispensaries, have to pass that background check, and rather than, you know, rescind the approval of the dispensary, which otherwise complies with our requirements, we say, "No, I'm sorry, you can't hire this individual." Should they choose to do that, then we would turn around and rescind the, or revoke the administrative use permit.
Is there a provision in the ordinance for revoking the administrative use permit under these circumstances?
There is a provision for revocation of an administrative use permit for failure to comply with the requirements of the permit or the code that applies to it.
Or I suppose you could simply not renew it.
That's also a possibility.
So this is kind of a practical determination that's giving the Green Gold Cultivators notice effectively that if they hire this person, their permit is in jeopardy.
Correct.
And I noticed that the section that provides for the background checks says that registration may be denied or invalidated. I don't know if that "invalidated" would be a word that could be used under these circumstances, as revoked or whatever. Where is the requirement for the employees to undergo the background check?
It's right there in 1791.040D. Background check of any applicant, use permit, or employee thereof. Thank you.
Is there a separate writing by which the Planning Director made this determination? Because it's not in the file that I --
No, no, I did not prepare any other statement. I reviewed the Sheriff's Department's recommendation to me and concurred with that.
Which the staff report states?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Is the appellant here today? Okay, would you like to come up and have your time to do your presentation? I'd also like to note that, I believe, Captain Macedo, are you here to speak on this one? We need?
Only if I need to.
Okay, thank you. So you can go ahead and do your presentation. I just want to make sure that you are aware that convictions are confidential. You don't have to talk about them, but you did write them in your staff report.
Yes, ma'am.
If you are, would like to waive your rights to speak to that, you can. It's up to you. This is a public hearing, so I'll let you go ahead and do your presentation.
I admit I've had a checkered cast. They were infractions rather than actual misdemeanor convictions, most of which were over 20 years old, about 18 years old, one of which that was on the report. All I can say is people change after almost 20 years. That's really all I can say, and I'm not, I'm not the same person I was 20 years ago, even 10 years ago, you know? I've learned from all the mistakes that I've made. I've paid for some of them. I'm just asking for more or less a fair hearing of the fairness of this. I don't actually work with medical cannabis. I don't work with money. I work as the door guy. I let people in, I check them in, make sure that they're, or I was, anyway. So I don't understand why some of these charges would even apply. I don't know what, I don't understand why that I'm a public safety hazard, or as he was kind of stating there, that I'm a danger to the safety of the public. I don't understand why.
Are you currently working there, or are you not working there now?
No, I'm currently jobless. That's a very financial impact for me.
Okay.
More or less, I was kind of hoping that there could be a reconsideration because of the fact that most of the things that I've done in my past are so long ago.
It states in your rec, in your letter that you are a security for, you are no longer done that?
Yes, ma'am. I work for Oracle. I also work part-time for Levi Stadium, but it's a very long drive, which is why I prefer to stay local, because I live in Angels Camp. I've been married for 10 years to one of the local school bus drivers. I mean, I couldn't implore more the fact that I have changed in the last 15 to 20 years, you know? I just, I'm begging that everybody on the stand here sees past what I did 20 years ago and see what I've become since then. I've grown up, I'm almost 40 years old now. I just want to go to work.
So I'm reading your notes here, and you keep referencing it's been 15 to 20 years, but then in your notes here, it says, "You can see by my record, for six years, I've led a clean life."
Seven years ago. The domestic violence issue, I was going through a custody battle with my ex-fiance, and she made up a lot of things, and they kind of just, it turned into this big thing that really wasn't, and then in the end, we had a big argument to separate the two of us. We both went for domestic violence. They took our child. It was, it was a big nasty ordeal. But that was not the real person that stands before you. That was, I was trying to get my kid, she was trying to get the kid. It was horrible. With that aside, aside from that, I have not done anything wrong in a long time, long, long time. I stole a CD from Walmart. It was a Poison CD, it was a rock and roll CD that was in 2001. I mean, the receiving stolen property, my ex-fiance, she handed up bike pads off of a bike that somebody took, and they gave us the receiving stolen property, both of us, for these little bike pads. I never did understand that. I mean, my past is, it's ridiculous. I've never really done anything seriously wrong. That's why you can see in my record, I've never actually done any time in jail. I mean, I might have done a week my whole life. All I can say is I have changed, and I'm not the same person I was 20 years ago, even 10 years ago. I've proven myself to be a productive member of society. I pay my taxes, I pay my house payments, my property taxes.
I have a question. The file contains a letter dated January 10th of this year from the Hawthorne Justice Court in Hawthorne, Nevada, addressed to a Matthew E. Mickelson at Post Office Box 148, which is your PO box, right? Why do we have this letter addressed to a Mr. Mickelson?
My name previously, many years ago, was Mickelson. I had changed it for my wife, because everything would have been more difficult to change her name versus my name. That was a ticket I got in Nevada 15 years ago. It was right before my son was born. I found out that there was something there, so I wrote them a letter and expressed sorrow for it. I would pay whatever ticket, whatever fines, they just wrote it off and said that you are clear.
So the ticket was several years ago, although this letter's dated January 10th of this year?
Yeah, I just recently found it, and they sent me the letter saying, "Go ahead, you're clear."
Thank you.
Okay, if no one has any further questions, and you have nothing else to say, would you like to hear from Captain Macedo?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. Captain Macedo, could you come up for a moment, please? Yeah, I would too.
Good morning. Good morning, Jim Macedo, from the Calaveras County Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office conducted a background in connection with the, with the current county ordinance. The background was reviewed by Sheriff's Office staff. There was a recommendation put forward by a sergeant in charge of the marijuana enforcement team that was sent to the Planning Department on October 11th, and it requested that the employee would not be eligible for employment. As I've mentioned during previous hearings, I won't be discussing convictions necessarily without a waiver. I can tell you there were additional arrests that were not disclosed today, and in light of the convictions and the arrests, we also look at a pattern, a pattern of conduct and behavior in concert with the arrests and the convictions, and therefore, when looking at the totality of the issues, including issues with probation, as specifically whether probation was completed successfully or not, after looking at the totality of circumstances, we submitted a letter to the Planning Department declining to pass or approve the background for this applicant. I'll take any questions you may have.
I don't know exactly how much of a waiver you need, but given what the appellant has said, that's in the staff report and in the, and in his presentation today, the types of violations that are before us, and the time that has been since that time, I'd just like you to comment on the totality of the considerations in this case, given what has publicly been stated.
You know, what I would like to do is bring Mr. Cowan up and see if we can get a complete waiver to discuss this before we proceed, just precautionary. Mr. Cowan? Has the sheriff provided you a copy of the criminal history information based on the background check you had for purposes of this application?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You understand that as the appellant, you have the burden of proof in this hearing, which means that you have to provide us with evidence of why your registration should not be denied. Otherwise, we may have to deny your appeal. Do you give the sheriff, or, excuse me, the captain, permission to review your convictions with us? Do you give us a waiver for that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Ladish, to answer your question, we did look at the time, the time factor. We obviously would consider, consider that, and that did not change our, our opinion. There were additional arrests of the applicant whereby he was not convicted. However, his probation was revoked in lieu of filing new and additional crimes. Do you guys follow what I'm getting at? Sometimes, if you're not familiar with criminal courts, the district attorney's office, when an individual is currently on probation and they are rearrested for new crimes in lieu of filing additional charges, they will at times just revoke probation or parole. I want to make it clear, this applicant wasn't on parole.
Are any of those occasions within the last 10 years?
Yes. Yes. And some of them are fairly significant, and it's difficult for me to get into the mind of the deputy district attorney that would have the charging decision, why they chose to not file new charges as opposed to, to just revoke probation. That's a decision the prosecutor makes on their own. That's something that's not necessarily available to us in a background packet. Some of those occurred within Calaveras County, some of those, from time to time, occur outside.
When was the last one of those?
Captain Macedo, Mr. Cowan looks very confused by some statements that you just made, and I'm wondering if he can come up and you can show him on the documents in your hands there, what you're talking about, that he can look at quickly, and that way, when he's doing his rebuttal, he'll have an opportunity to address it.
Sure, just bear with me.
Thank you.
Stay on this end, please. So this is your criminal history here. Probation revoked in lieu of filing. Probation revoked in lieu of filing.
4158?
No, for 273.5. That's the corporal injury spouse. Go ahead.
What was this?
That was the case you mentioned, just a moment.
Public will have a moment to speak in a minute.
So that was in 2000?
2002.
Two?
From the Derrick County.
We're in 2017 now?
Correct.
It's a long time.
Okay.
It's a long time.
Any other questions?
The one that I was posing was whether any of these had happened within the last five years. So you've indicated that, yes, within the last 10 years.
The most recent was 2011, I believe.
Was that the domestic violence incident?
No, that was, the one I was referring to with him was in 2002. There is also another one in 2011.
Another?
So we're talking, let me try and clarify for the panel.
Please.
There appears to be two separate domestic violence incidents, okay? One in 2002, in reviewing it, in lieu of filing additional charges, probation was revoked. In 2011, in a separate county, entirely separate incident, there was an additional incident, and that also, the probation was revoked in lieu of filing. There was, there was previous conditions of probation. Am I, does everybody understand where I'm?
Yeah, and you had, you had talked about additional arrests. Are these arrests related to these two incidents that you're talking about, or are there other arrests?
No, there are other arrests.
What kinds of arrests? I think he's waived his rights here. And what timeframe are we looking at?
In 1993, there was an arrest for arson.
I was 12. I accidentally sent a --
We've got that in your report, thank you.
What I'd like to do is just, I would like to list all the arrests, and then I'll step away and allow the appellant to have as much time as he'd like.
You'll get a chance to speak.
In 1994, there was a burglary. And a 1991 petty theft. 2000 petty theft. 2000 violation of probation. 2001 violation of a court order. 2001, receiving stolen property. 2002 was, there was nothing that was related to the 2001 case. 2007, there was a presenting false identification or information to a peace officer. It's like 2017, driving without a license. 2011, battery on a spouse or cohabitant. I'm paraphrasing the charges for, in the interest of time. 2011, actually, that's the same case.
The burglary was also taken to a petty theft.
Okay, can, I'm gonna, Mr. Cowan, please let him finish reading through the report, and then we're gonna give you an opportunity to rebuttal all of it.
There was a additional arrest in 2011 relating to domestic violence and disturbing the peace, and that is it.
Okay, thank you very much.
The burglary was dropped down to a misdemeanor petty theft, because we stole, me and a friend of ours, we stole beer. I was 18. We walked into the store, we took beer. I didn't know the consequences back then, that it would affect me in 20 years. I really did not think that. Me and my ex, we just didn't get along. We argued a lot. We both went to jail for corporal injury, misdemeanor, but they just let us out the next day, because nobody did nothing, they just took everybody. When everybody's arguing, he said, she said, they take you both. This was a very long time ago.
So in 2007, the presenting a false identification, that was?
That was a misunderstanding. I was smoking pot behind a store building, and I don't know why I said the wrong name. I rebutted it immediately, but apparently it stuck.
Okay. And do you currently have a driver's license now?
Yes, ma'am.
Pardon me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you just didn't have it on you when you?
I just didn't have it on me.
Okay, okay. Okay, is there anything else you would like to add to that?
I did drive without a license, as he said. I was without a license for about six months. I had issues. I had to work. I didn't know how else to get to work. I had a family to feed. I got a ticket. The officer understood that, and he let me drive off. All I could say is, a lot of little things that come up in my life that are misunderstood is one thing, when it really wasn't.
And you're currently not on any probation right now?
I'm not on any probation.
Okay.
I'm a local homeowner.
Okay.
All I can really say is, all these charges that he's pointing out were a very long time ago, and under that discrimination that Scott here said, age is a factor here. I think I'm being discriminated by their judgment for something I did a long time ago, that I think some of the things I've done nowadays should play into that fact. I haven't been convicted of any sort of crime, tickets, nothing. I've done everything I can to stay on the up and up.
Only one of your convictions was when you were a minor, correct? All the rest of them, when you were an adult?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Most of them were when I turned 18, and they stopped at about 21. And then I had the domestic issue in 2011.
Okay.
So, I mean, everything happened between 17 and 21. That's a long time.
Okay, are there any further questions? Do you have anything?
I would hope that after this long, that this wouldn't affect my employment. I work security, I protect people for a living, you know? It's what I do. I'm not a danger to anyone or anything. I don't understand why being portrayed as so bad. He kind of made me look pretty bad, but...
If you protect people for a living, do you have your CCW?
No, ma'am. I do have TASER, baton training, handcuff, everything else.
Okay, I don't think that's gonna pertain right now to today. Okay, so I think we've got what we need from you. I'd like to offer that if Scott has any rebuttal, and also go back to the public for public comment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything further you want to add?
Nothing further, other than we received a recommendation from the Sheriff's Office, and we looked at the relevant information and concurred with the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody in the public that would like to make any statements?
Hello, my name is Tom Kalmese. I'm the owner-operator of Green Gold. I'm a owner operator of Green Gold. With having people work for us, um, the procedure is if I decide someone's gonna work with us immediately, we file the background check, um, with the sheriff's office. And when we decided to give Matt a try, we immediately did that. It was at least a couple of months later before we got the notice that they denied him, which at that point I no longer could have him help me because I'm, you know, staying with all the rules and regulations. But I did wanna point out to me, I saw the record that they, they sent me and a summary of why they were denying him. And on, on there, I mean, there's not one felony conviction. There are misdemeanors. Um, I do, you know, kind of agree with that. People change. I mean, I know that there's plenty of things I've did in my teenage years, my early twenties that I'm not proud of or, you know, just dumb stuff as a kid that no way today I would make the same mistakes. And I, you know, think that people deserve a second chance. He, for when he was working for me, he does, he stays in the lobby, he doesn't handle any marijuana products, he doesn't handle any cash. He, we have a security gate door, you can't just walk in freely, you have to be let in and you have to be let out. And that was his job and he does a good job at that. I mean, and he also currently holds, you know, a state California security card that he, for the state, his background was satisfactory to pass that. I mean, I know that county and state, different things and different rules, but, I mean, if he's able to, you know, do security at a Super Bowl, Levi's Stadium and Raiders games and concerts and stuff, I mean, it seems like, you know, he would be safe with answering the door, in my opinion. And, uh, I know, I, I think he's a safe guy. I trust him. I mean, I said he doesn't handle money or product, but out of the people I've had, we were going into, uh, two thousand and eighteen, will be open for five years almost, or this coming year. And then of the five years, the best door person I've had, I mean, the most thorough, uh, making sure people, you know, are legitimate, not, you know, people, because people will come in and try to be, oh, yeah, yeah, it's good. And like, no, you have to make sure that, you know, that they're valid with the recommendations and all that stuff. And he did a very good job at that. So I mean, I would ask maybe to consider, you know, I, I don't know what you guys can do possibly, but I mean, maybe a probation period or something where, you know, if he's allowed to work for me and if he violates anything, then terminate him. Um, cause I, he's a good employee, he's a good worker. And I would like to have him back on my staff if I'm allowed to. But I mean, obviously, when I'm told not to, I'm not gonna continue that because, you know, rules are rules and I abide by them. So I just would ask people to consider, you know, maybe a, a second chance at, you know, doing, you know, he's a local guy, a local job and, uh, helping me out and it'd help him out as well.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Come on up. You have to come up, you have to come up to the mic, please. Hello.
I'm the wife, so might be biased. Six and a half years ago was the last conviction that he ever had and that was helping me get my sixteen-year-old son under control. He took the fall for it because we were all arguing. He has not done anything within six and a half years. I take that back. He has taken care of my dad, who was ninety when he passed away last year. He's taken care of me with cancer, breast cancer, last year. So he does take care of people. He has changed. All that stuff that he had before, and you see, everything has been, six and a half years, sixteen years and everything, yes. It's almost a statute of limitation, seven years, since he's been in any kind of trouble. You asked about, I'm the one who does all the records and all the research and everything like that and good with dates. Found out that he had that driving without a license in Hawthorne, Nevada. They sent a letter out of the blue, hey, you've got to pay a fine. And I sent a letter back to them saying he's changed. He hasn't gotten any trouble or anything. They said, okay. And that's what you have in the file, was a forgiveness of that violation that he had way back when in a whole nother life, if that helps. Do you have any questions about any of the background? Cause I'm the one who did all the research and helped him write that.
I, I do, I, I missed right at the beginning. Where do you fit into his life's picture right now?
I'm his wife. I'm his current wife.
You are. I'm sorry, you are?
I am his current wife.
You are his current wife, thank you. I appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
And what is your name?
Candace Cowan. Oh, and my dad's a historian and he loved my dad. That's why he changed his name. Because Michaelson doesn't mean anything to me. That was a previous life. He changed his name for my name, Cowan. That's the only dad he really had, but my dad totally passed. So, but that's what he's been doing, he hasn't been able to work. And then I wasn't able to work in two thousand and sixteen. My dad passed away that same year and I had breast cancer, so I had to go through chemo and all that stuff. And he took care of me. So now he's finally got a job and something he really knows about. He's known, I can say that now because it's becoming legal. Something he really knows about is, is this industry. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other further public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing to the public and bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation.
Well, I'm struggling with this one. I could certainly understand why the sheriff took the action that the sheriff did. I understand why the planning director agreed with the sheriff. And just having somebody come up and say, I've changed, um, it's hard to accept or deny on its face. But when we have the employer involved, saying that he, that the, uh, appellant has performed in the job that he will be performing in and has done a very good job at it, and having his wife come forward with what has been happening in the last few years, um, I'm coming around to accept the fact that he has changed. And, uh, I'm looking forward to hearing the other comments from the other commissioners, but I'm, 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 I'm struggling with this one. And I, if I were to decide to grant the appeal, it is not in any way a criticism of the sheriff's action in this case.
Well, I guess I have a question of the planning director. After hearing all of the evidence today, would it still be your determination that the applicant is ineligible for employment?
I guess I am sort of in the same quandary that Commissioner Ladish is in. Um, I, you know, I think people can change. The whole criminal justice system is supposed to be for rehabilitation, although that doesn't always work. It does work with some, it doesn't work with others. I don't know enough of the details of, you know, his current situation, his, you know, history, other than what we have heard today and what was in the, um, the original background report. It would be hard for me to make a decision one way or the other.
Well, but the, the, the code...
I realize it rests on my shoulders.
...puts that determination on the planning director.
I, I mean, I'm gonna let him off the hook here for just a minute because I understand what you're saying about the code. I think based on looking at the information from the sheriff's department, having the captain come and testify to the convictions, having the appellant agree that these things happened, when I look at our future, if this is going to be the future of Calaveras County, we've got three dispensaries, we could potentially have more someday. Um, we've set standards for what we expect from those dispensaries. And if we waiver now, then it's always gonna be a waiver into the future. So for me, it's, it's very difficult to look at this and say, and, and I understand people deserve second chances, I understand some people can change, I get all that. But this is an industry that we're trying to set a standard for in our county. And if we start breaking the rules now, then we're not going to be, um, very happy with the end results, I think, with, down the road. So that's my opinion.
Well, these cases are on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, they are.
And, um, just as some of our cultivator appeals rest on credibility, uh, here I'm really, with all respect to the applicant, I'm not resting my tendency to grant this appeal on his affirmation that he's changed. Everybody can come up and say, I've changed. And if we just grant an appeal on that basis, well, I agree with you, it would be a, uh, I mean, again, it's a credibility thing, but it, it could set a bad precedent. Here we have input from the employer and from his wife. And, uh, I think if I make a decision that, uh, that the appeal should be granted, it will be on the basis of the special facts of this case, that, uh, I think showing a devotion to a father-in-law and, uh, helping him through his, uh, life crisis and death, is an indication that it, that this is not the same person who, um, stole the CD and, whenever it was. And that having the employer say, this is a good employee, that's really what we want in dispensaries. But I agree with you, that's, it's, we, we have to employ a very high standard when we're dealing with these cases. But I think we apply the standard, the high standard, on a case-by-case basis.
No, we have to go by very high standard. And I don't think it should be on a case-by, it's a high standard for a reason. It's not, it's a high standard, and don't get me wrong, I feel for you what you've done in your past, you've done in your past. But I also don't think six years is a long time. Uh, six years is a short amount of time. Uh, I agree that the eighteen years, that was a long time ago. Twenty years, a long time ago. Six years was not a long time ago. I do not think that, I think that we need to set a high standard. We've already set it and we need to stick with it.
I'm not sure we have set a standard that's as definitive as we would like it to be, but on the other hand, I'm not quite sure how to change it or to make it more specific. For once, I, I do agree with Karen, the, uh, this six years isn't that long ago. I also know that from, from my own experience with domestic violence cases, that there's often the he said, she said business, but in almost every case where we've seen that, where I've seen it, uh, both sides were wrong. And I, I, yeah, hopefully, Mr. Cowan has changed and isn't gonna get in trouble again, but I, I just can't go so far as to say he's that clean.
Well, I agree that some of this is relatively recent, like last, well, this year. I think that we have to rely to a certain extent upon the expertise of the sheriff's department in making these determinations because they are the experts on what ought to be disqualifying. And they are adhering to their recommendation. And, um, given all that I've heard, I think I'm, unless the planning director tells me different, I think I'm prepared to deny the appeal.
Okay, then I don't think the planning director's telling you different. And...
Yeah, I made my decision based on the information I had in front of me at the time. And, um, I think at this point in time, the, the appeal is before the commission. And I don't think it's appropriate necessarily for me to try to convince you one way or the other, whether or not I made the right decision at that point in time. I made the decision based on what I had available then. If you feel that the new information that you have overrides my prior determination, then, you know, I'm comfortable with that. But I, I don't know that I can say, oh, I was wrong, you should change your mind. I may have been wrong and you could override my determination, but that's your call.
One, um, one problem I have, well, I, this appears to be irrelevant, but the, I see no problem with this employee doing what he was hired to do, be the doorman. Uh, I, I think I might, I'd, I'd be more troubled if there's, if he might get to, so he was handling, uh, the cannabis or handling money. And there's nothing, no restriction we can put on, um, we, we can't tell you how to run your business other than what's in the regulations. So that's, that's a problem I have. I was hoping you could have something to add.
With all due respect, I'm gonna wait till this hearing closes and then I may just briefly address the, uh, the planning commission real quick on some, some information outside of this particular, uh, appeal, but it may relate and help you with your decision-making process.
Okay, so if there's no other comments, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, call for the vote, see if we can get some sort of a, I think Scott, we'll have you read the recommendation first, please.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution twenty seventeen dash one zero four, denying twenty seventeen one four one appeal, thereby upholding the determination of the appellant's ineligibility for employment at a medical cannabis dispensary.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye, based on my last reservations.
Opposed? Okay, so it's gonna be five out. I mean, it, hold on one second, Peter needs to...
So this action is final unless appealed to the board of supervisors within fifteen calendar days.
And I think in this case, uh, we haven't done one of these before, that either the employer or the employee would have the ability to appeal. Okay.
There is a five, five hundred dollar appeal fee? Yes.
Okay.
Good morning. I just wanted to address a couple of topics with the, the planning commission because there, I think there's a little bit of confusion about the process by which, uh, the sheriff's office does, um, does these backgrounds. And I want to appreciate Mr. Wooster's comments. Uh, so the county set up a system whereby they're asking the sheriff's office to conduct as comprehensive of a background as they can on, uh, on these applicants and to render a professional decision based upon risk. Risk what we see with, uh, with respect to the employees working in a variety of businesses. We don't just do backgrounds for cannabis cultivation sites. We do taxi cab, massage parlor, we do a variety, child daycare, schools, what have you. And what troubles me a, a little bit is, um, we, we do have, uh, a series and a matrix that we utilize, uh, for a variety of things, from a SWAT entry to the service of a search warrant. We professionally manage risk as an organization. Risk of safety to the public, risk of safety to staff. So to not take too much of your time, I respect this body's, uh, decision-making ability, but I would ask that you place some significant weight on the sheriff's recommendations because we professionally manage risk each and every day, based upon individuals, based upon criminal history, past behavior, um, outside of marijuana issues, access to firearms. Uh, we, that is what we do for a living and, excuse the French, but we're damn good at it. So I would ask that you respect the sheriff's office. Uh, I'm not saying unequivocally approve everything that we request, but I think, uh, there's a misunderstanding to what extent we do, uh, not only these backgrounds, but to the extent that we actually manage risk to the public. And, uh, there was a point made by Mr. Ladish, when we do pre-employment backgrounds, it's set on a standard for an employee. We don't get to go in and tell somebody, well, you can only work the gate, you can only work the door, you can't have access to cash, you can't have access to marijuana. Once it's approved, you lose control. They can put that employee wherever they want, whether it's child... whether it's child daycare, whether it's driving, again, driving a taxi cab. So understanding all of that, we actually look at what the potential for the employee is and manage risk based upon that. Okay? Thank you.
Could I respond to that for a moment?
Sure.
And why wouldn't you also, in your professional approach to this thing, be able to limit the job that this gentleman has been requesting? He is a guard, apparently by the state rules. Couldn't he be a guard or something like, some definition similar to that?
Sure, I think that would-
Why is there no ability to look past the black and white here?
I think the county would have to specifically identify in their marijuana dispensary ordinance separate employee positions and restrict that. I would tell you, though, that the inspection process would be cumbersome, and it would be difficult, and there is no guarantee. I also think that employers have certain rights as well, that if you're restricting an employee to work one area, that business may change in six months, and they may need that employee elsewhere. So therefore, they would have to come back and, you know, either reapply or go through another process. I can just tell you from a sheriff's office standpoint, we're constantly moving employees around because of needs, whether it's, you know, staff, promotion staff leaving, changes in the, you know, crime environment and what have you. So that would need to be included in a permanent ordinance. Would have to be laid out very specifically.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we be very careful here going into ordinances and writing ordinances because that is not an agendized item today. The captain was providing us information that was going to be based on sheriff making decisions, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to also, just Captain Macedo, I know you're concerned about the, letting the sheriff make the decision. I just wanted to know that in the ordinance, right, as it's written right now, the old dispensary ordinance, it's written differently. It says the planning director has to make the decision. That might change when we change the dispensary ordinance. But that's the reason why it's not just-
Correct. And one of the reasons we're making that change is because the planning director doesn't assess risk and do, and as a normal course of business, do employee backgrounds.
It's just in there right now.
Correct.
Right.
And I just want to say that I do respect your-
Excuse me, counsel, is there an issue beyond what you're talking about?
No, I just didn't know if you were aware that there, of what it said and how that constrains the decision-making process right now.
Okay.
That's it.
I wanted to make clear what I said, reinforce what I said before, that I understand how the sheriff reached the decision, the sheriff's office reached. And I think that that was a good decision. My problems, or troubling decision was what we heard today-
Correct.
About what was going on. But I, I think you people do a great job, and I do respect it, and I give a lot of weight to what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item number two, 2016-368. Hello, Miguel, never even seen the seats change. I know that, I believe, we all received a letter of request for a continuance on this one. Thank you. So, you want to speak to that first?
I believe the appellant's here, if she wants to speak to it.
Come on up, please. Hi.
I'm Tamara Morris, Tammy Morris. I have not been able to get ahold of my legal counsel. We hired Matt Clark when the ordinance was first starting, I think it was a year ago, two years ago. And when we got the denial from Miguel, I have been trying to contact him since then so far. Phone calls, emails, sitting at his office, leaving a note taped to his door, and he won't return our phone calls. So I'm completely ill-prepared for a presentation or anything that I was supposed to show today. I just didn't have, again, legal counsel to kind of guide me where I'm supposed to go, what I'm supposed to do.
Okay. So we have a request for a continuance before us. Does anybody, you want to hear from the public first and then discuss if there's any public comment?
Please.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Were your grows outside, or do you have hoop houses?
It was outside.
All outside?
Yes.
And I take it you're not growing now?
No. No, there's nothing there, there's nothing there.
When would you plan on starting to grow again?
Spring, I think, is when they start. February, March is when the new seeds stand, they start their, the seeds. So usually isn't put into the earth until maybe April, May. I could be a month or two off. I think it's about May is when we start putting them into the ground.
And how much time do you think you need to obtain counsel?
I don't know what the, the normal, a week, two weeks. I don't need much more time than that. I just would like, if I can't get ahold of my lawyer, I would like to get counsel from somebody, some advice from somebody as to where, what pictures we should be taking, if we should be doing measurements, what it is we should be doing. I just don't know. So that's kind of where I'm at. It's, it's kind of up to you how much time you want to give me. I don't, I don't know what the normal, if it's another 45 days, if it's two weeks, I don't know.
So the next scheduled planning commission hearing is, we do not have a meeting the last week of December. So we're, it'll be the second Thursday of January. So approximately a month, I don't know what exact date that-
And how's that day stacking up already?
The next upcoming meetings are January 9th or January 25th, no, January 11th or January 25th.
I think either of those would be fine. If we could go a little bit farther, it might be, give me a little bit more time, but either, either I will work with.
When did the county send her a letter of denial? Do we have a date?
My denial letter?
September 25th.
Want to hear from the public?
Yep. Okay. Does anybody in the public have any comments they would like to make on this particular appeal?
Well, are we restricting the comment just on the request for continuance at this point in time?
This is just on the, for the continuance, if you want to allow the continuance or not.
I don't think you should. She's had plenty of time to take care of business. I got my letter that she, to come to this hearing on December 1st, and I managed to get my paperwork together and get my letter and my comments ready. Just because she has a lawyer doesn't mean she deserves a denial. She has plenty of time to get her stuff together and get her paperwork together. And if she can't get ahold of a lawyer, maybe she needs to get another lawyer. That's all I have to say.
Excuse me, what is your name?
My name is Carol Tatum, T-A-T-U-M. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. And do you have anything you would like to say regarding the continuance?
It's fine with me either. Peter?
Yeah, at this point in time, we really don't have a concern about continuance. I understand the concern of the member of the public that, you know, this was denied in September. The appeal was filed in October. It's now been two months. We've delayed it already a couple of times just because of other hearing needs. We have granted continuances in the past when someone has been trying to get counsel to assist them in their appeal. I don't think I would, I would continue, would recommend continuance to the next available agenda, January 11th.
Can I, can I say something real fast? I, the, the 45 days fell on Thanksgiving. So I was asked by the county to waive my right for the appeal hearing. So that was, that was not on my behalf whatsoever.
I, I recognize that.
Okay.
Yeah, that was our, because of our workload and-
Yeah, and it was Thanksgiving. I believe it fell right smack on that day. So that was why.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so-
I'd like to point out one thing. I called Matt Clark when I saw the request for a continuance, and he told me that he wasn't going to be representing her in any litigation or in administrative appeals. So, so he won't be the one who's representing him according to what he told me. So apparently, she should probably get a different lawyer.
Okay. Okay, based on that information, I'd like to grant the continuance, let her go find some legal counsel. She's not going to be able to grow, so the member of the public should not be affected during this appeal process because she won't be growing anything. So that's my opinion. How do you all feel?
Well, I think another relevant factor is that she got her request for continuance in on time, which we've sometimes had people come in the day of the hearing with something like this. And I'm perfectly willing to grant the continuance.
I'd rather hear it today.
Okay.
I think we should grant the continuance. I would say that it would be nice if lawyers would return phone calls from their clients.
I'm not even going to make any comment on that since there's four lawyers sitting at this table.
Yeah, I'd go ahead with the continuance. I see no reason to not do it.
So can I get a motion for a continuance, please?
So moved.
I'll, I'll second it.
And is it continuance to a date certain?
Yes, go to January 11th. All right, actually, do you all feel that that's enough time, considering she needs to go find new counsel?
I would go for a little longer.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, too.
So the 25th, is that the next one after that?
That would be the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, January 25th.
I'll, I'd go for that, too.
Okay, so the motion is going to be date certain to January 25th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, four one. Okay, thank you.
I have a question if I may. Will I get another letter?
Absolutely, we'll make sure you get contacted.
Actually, no, there will not be, because it was continued to a date certain. It will be continued to Thursday, January 25th.
I can check the calendar for the 25th.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, can we take a 10-minute break, please? Thank you. Are you ready? Okay, you all ready? All right, we'll bring the meeting back to order, and we're going to go to item number three, number 2016-729. And Ben, I'm really missing smiles in this room today, so you have to present with a smile, okay?
Can do.
All right.
But before we begin, I do have two typos I need to point out. On the top of the staff report, it has the date of December 17th. Today is not Sunday, it is the 14th that the hearing is happening. And on the resolution, item number two was erroneously marked as code section 179516582A when it should be 1795165N7, the grading.
N7?
N7.
Thank you. Glad you caught that before they did.
I knew they would.
They, I know, I'm looking at their faces, and they're like I was ready. Okay.
All right, so Ben Diamond, Planning Department. I will be presenting Appeal 2016-729 from Carlos de la Osa, appealing the denial of commercial medical cannabis cultivation registration application 2016-729 by the planning director. This application was denied for grading beyond the May 10th, 2016 deadline, failing to complete the mandatory criminal background check, and failing to notify the planning department of a change and provide the new contact information within 72 hours of the change occurring. This site is located out at the very end of Golden Gate Drive in San Andreas. It is a 5.03 acre parcel, zoned rural residential five. This is the plot plan that was submitted with the application. It gives you an idea of the cultivation areas located behind the residence on the parcel. And all of the information provided in this plot plan gives no indication that the cultivation area would be within the setbacks as the appellant claims it was. In fact, it makes it look like there is ample room to meet the setbacks all the way around the cultivation area and gives no indication that any grading or adjustment would be needed. On April 20th, 2017, code compliance performed a site inspection of the site. At this time, they found a graded pad with no plants present on it. Here, we're looking from the road that goes down from behind the dwelling to the, I suppose that's the west end of the cultivation area. And it just pans to the left as we look. You can see the cut slope there to the right, the rest of the pad, some of the scrapings, the remnants of the previous season's cultivation and/or fencing. It's hard to tell exactly what it is. It just appears to be maybe grow cages for the plants. And then that's looking up the road. Looks like a tree was removed. And then there's some more balled-up fencing. Looking down the fill slope, it looks like there was a small amount of erosion. Then looking further down the fill slope, just further showing that this is a significantly sized graded pad. And aerial imagery from between June 3rd, 2016, and June 28th, 2017 confirms that the grading was indeed done on the cultivation area. Here, we see June 3rd, 2016. The, looks like holes have been dug for the cultivation area. They don't appear to have plants in them yet, but the area's mostly been clear. And then August 20th, the grow site's been fully developed. There's roughly 13,000 square feet of cultivation area there. And a rough measurement using GIS or the Arc Reader software to view the aerial imagery puts it about, the closest plant, about 106 feet from the boundary line. The boundaries aren't, of course, you know, 100% where they might be, but it gives you a good reference once the grading occurs. And then here we see on June 1st, 2017, the large pad has been graded. Comparing the distance from the boundary on the closest part of the graded pad to the closest part of the, this cultivation area, there's only a difference of about a few feet. So the appellant has made the claim that the grading was done for an adjustment of the cultivation area to meet a 20-foot disparity after they had their property surveyed. So it seems that if there was, in fact, a 20-foot difference between where they thought the property line was, the cultivation area would move more than a couple feet. And then here we see on June 28th, it was, in fact, for the purposes of cultivation because the plants are back on top of the pad. You see smart pots arranged in a grid and perhaps just loosely there off to the side of the grid of smart pots and some sort of tarp structure over there. And a measurement of this pad puts it at roughly 20,000 square feet. So the overall cultivation site has increased in size, which is specifically prohibited by N7. And the appellant was mailed a packet from the sheriff's office for the background check, first to the registrant's mailing address on August 31st, 2016, including the request for live scan service and instructions to contact the sheriff's office to set up the background check. That packet was returned as undeliverable. So they sent another packet on March 20th, 2017 to the registrant's business mailing address, this time with a letter requesting a response by June 30th of 2017, I do believe. And that was also returned as undeliverable. The planning department sent a letter to the registrant's mailing address on July 19th, and that was also returned as undeliverable. So it's apparent that a change in the appellant's mailing address occurred. The urgency ordinance requires that if a change in any contact information for the registrant occurs during the registration period, that they must notify the planning department in writing and provide the new information in 72 hours of the change. We were not provided the new information until August 11th, 2017, which, based on the mail that was returned- August 11th, 2017, which based on the mail that was returned starting in 2016 is well after the 72 hours of the change happening. And because the information was not updated in a timely manner, the appellant failed to receive the letter from the Planning Department, which set a 10-day deadline in which they had to contact the sheriff's office to complete the criminal background check. And therefore, the appellant did not complete the background check within that 10-day window. And based on those, that is why the application was denied.
I have a question about the boundary lines, because what's shown on the, on your first slide, which was their site plan?
Nope.
Yeah.
There we go.
There. That boundary is a different shape than the boundary that's shown on your aerial photography.
Yes.
There are corners that don't exist on the aerial photography.
Not quite clear where that was gotten. That was done by Barnett Environmental, the consulting firm hired by the appellant for their waterboard studies, I assume. So they have dimensions on it, so it is to some sort of scale how it relates to the actual parcel.
But it's a different shape. I mean, usually, we have a question of whether it slipped down or slipped up or right or left. I don't know what we should be looking at.
I can't exactly explain the disparity between the parcel shapes.
Oh, and on your, on the aerial photographs, after the grading has occurred, which, yeah, which, which is, where's downhill?
Downhill is towards the bottom of the slide. As you can see, there's a blue line stream over to the side there. It runs into a bit of a valley.
So...
Down into the left.
Well, then I guess, when you showed where the cultivation ended up, it was down toward the lower corner, wasn't it? Yeah.
Yes.
So that's on the down, it's downhill from the pad? I mean, see, I'm...
Oh, no, it is on the pad. The pad is a completely level pad. Previously, I assume the cultivation area was somewhat in contour with the slope going down this direction, but once it's graded, it's a flat pad that the cultivation is located on there.
Okay, so the, where we see a light colored gray...
That is the erosion control on the fill slopes. The, this going around it.
Okay.
That is the fill slope of the pad.
So the pad itself is cut into the hill?
Yes.
Not filled, I'm really getting confused here, Ben.
Based off of the photos taken from Code Compliance, it appears that it is both somewhat cut into the hill and then extends out.
Sends out enough that it has to drop down from there.
Otherwise, they wouldn't so much have a fill slope.
I think I've got it. Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions for Ben?
One.
Okay.
What's the total canopy area?
That they registered for?
No, that they, that they grew.
That they grew this season. It is actually less, it appears. It's unclear whether or not the rest of the pad was fully covered in plants. At this point, it is less than what was originally grown in 2016. However, the section N7 that prohibits grading after the 10th, the cultivation area is the part that's, the proportional adjustment is referenced to. The expansion is in reference to the overall cultivation site. So anywhere cultivation is occurring, not necessarily only planting, because that is only one aspect of cultivation.
Thank you.
Mr. Lata, I asked you about the shape of the, I thought he asked about the shape of the grow site.
No, it was...
Were you talking about the parcel?
The entire parcel.
Okay. Now, now I'm waking up. All right. The parcel map is so grossly different, and you have no explanation for that?
Without having, what I imagine is a very lengthy discussion with the GIS department and the assessor, no.
Do you know if Natalie was ever contacted at the Sheriff's Department and that's been addressed?
As far as I know, she has not.
Okay, and the REBO was here earlier, but she's not now. She's testifying to the fact that there's no fencing, there's other issues there. Has any of that been cleared? Because I don't see any clearance of her Code Compliance.
Code has not been back out there to re-inspect the site, so no.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Nope. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and go to the appellant.
Okay. My original, my original permit was for 15,200 square feet. Last year, the slope was the working area. The actual grow site was at about a 13 to 15% slope. And as you can see in the first aerial, when I hired Barnett Industries, how you guys say that the plot plan is different than the parcel on there, I'm not sure where they went ahead and they got this aerial photo from and where they built this plot plan from. But when they actually came to do the assessments, since we're in new grow, we had to do the whole assessments, they realized that the parcel is actually different than the plot plan that they made. And on the east side of the grow, our property line was actually pushed over 30 feet out to the left side of the actual red line there.
Now, I have to interrupt you for just one second, because I need you to state your name for the record, or Annette's gonna get me later.
Carlos de la Osa III.
Okay, thank you.
So in order for us to be able to comply with the setback that you guys had, we had to move the east side of it, move the whole grow 30 feet over to the left. So in order for me to do that, on top of it being on a 13% slope, I went to the building department and I explained to them what I had to do. And I asked if I was able to go ahead and grade the plot to make it more comfortable for me to work on and everything while I was at it. I did speak to Sharon, a young woman named Sharon or Shannon, which was, I guess, one of the inspectors that goes out to the property. I explained to her my situation. She went back and spoke to somebody, I guess, higher than her, and came back out and told me that yes, that with everything that I needed to do, that the grading would be allowed, that the grading would be allowed for my circumstance. I went and when I got my grading permit application, I put on there that it was to expand a grow site. And the county accepted my grow permit. They took everything in and allowed me to start doing things.
You have a copy of the request for the grading permit with you? Does the notes that we have reflect differently? It says that you applied but never followed up and Public Works has contacted you?
The only thing that I got was something about insufficient information because they're requiring me to get an engineered plan, but I moved less than 1,000 yards of soil. So I was told that was not required.
I'm gonna have you hand anything and everything to Annette instead of coming across the room and...
Anything under 1,000 yards, I would not need an engineered plan for the, for the grading purposes.
Okay, so just for clarity purposes, I believe it's 50 yards requires a grading permit?
Well, yes, but an engineered plan for anything over 1,000 yards of soil moved. I did not move more than 1,000 yards.
Okay, okay. You can keep doing your presentation while they're looking at that, if you'd like.
Okay, so I mean, basically, that's the reason why the, the grow was graded and everything, because it had to be moved over to the left 30 feet in order to be able to comply with the 75-foot setback.
And, and we will have time for questions, but maybe he can lend you the laser thing so you can point to when you say move to the left.
This area right here, this red line was supposed, we're, we're going by the fence line on my property. But come to find out when they did the assessment, my actual fence line is not my property line.
Can you stand behind the mic, please? Because we need to get it on camera. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So what, once again, this red line here, where my fence line is, is not our actual property line. It's actually pushed over to the neighbor's property a little bit over. So in order for us to comply with the actual property line and the 75-foot setback, we had to move everything over 30 feet to the left to be able to comply with that.
You're, you're, when you say left, you mean?
Well, towards the west. So we had to move this here 30 feet over this way, because we weren't compliant with the setback on this side here. Because if you look by this plot plan, we're actually missing all of this to our property here. I'm not sure how they were able to get this aerial, and it's totally different from what the actual parcel really is.
Okay, so I, I just need to get some clarity here, because we've got, we're dealing with parcels that are completely different shapes. Whose map is that?
This is from a third-party Barnett Environmental Industries.
Somebody you hired?
Yes.
And the maps that we're looking at in our package are from the county's GIS, correct?
Except for the June 28th aerial image, that's from Google Earth.
Okay. Do you have anything else other than this showing your parcel? Do you think that the company that you hired has the right parcel? Because that shape is completely wrong.
Well, it is completely wrong. That is my property. For some reason, the way that the plot plan or the, their aerial came up is that's the parcel size. I'm not sure how that happened. I hired them to take everything, and then once they actually came onto the property to measure the corners and do the assessments and everything, they realized that they had made a mistake and that everything was not what the plot plan or the aerial that they put together was to be.
So you hired them before?
Before I graded, yes. And before I dug the first hole, I went to the building department and I asked if I was allowed to grade, and I was told yes. It was my mistake that I didn't get a written agreement or, or an email or anything to state that yes, I was allowed. I went by word of mouth, and that was my mistake. But I did ask questions, and I was told that in my circumstance, for what I was gonna do or what I had to do in order to comply, I was able to grade. All I needed to do was pull the grading permit, and I went ahead and I did that.
Okay, so on this parcel map, did, this company has admitted they made a mistake on the, the shape of your lot, and have they provided you a new one?
No.
No, they have not admitted the mistake?
Well, I, I spoke to them. I told them everything about it. He said that, I, I went through a third party. I went through a consultant that hired a, a fourth party, actually, to do the whole assessments and all that stuff. So I've already contacted my consultant, and he's working everything out with them. But then I have another plot plan there that shows the grading and all that stuff, how much earth was gonna be moved and, and how much things now. Yes, the cultivation site was expanded to 19,000 square feet, but I still continue to grow this here on my 15,200 square feet of canopy space. The extra 4,000 square feet that I left was for me to put a building up for storage and drying and different things like that. It was not used for cultivation.
And was that part of the grading permit that you applied for?
Well, no, I didn't, because I, I was gonna go ahead and submit permits and stuff like that to build the building, but I wasn't ready at the moment. So I just went ahead and I applied for the grading permit, and I stated...
Well, that's what I meant. The 4,000 square feet was part of your grading permit?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Who did the survey?
Barnett Environmental Industries.
Was it actually a survey or just a consultant going on and looking at the ground?
Well, it's a consultant, and then he hired an environmental company, and they came out and they used a Tobo machine to do the elevation and figure out how much dirt I was gonna move and all that stuff.
When was this survey done?
I believe in the grading paper there that I have, there's a date, I believe. I'm not sure.
The typed, the typed date is March 2, 2017, received at the county Public Works April 4th of 17. It has Lee Nordahl as the ALS.
So when the county asked you for further information, did you ever provide that to them, or is that still open and you went ahead and did the grading without a permit?
Well, from what I was told when I went and I spoke to the Planning Department, they told me since we were doing the whole grading thing, and then the grading usually takes two months or so in order for everything to go through, and we're in a business that we work during a season. So by the time that my grading permit would have got approved, I would have missed out on the season. So basically, they were, I was told that we had a little bit of leeway to go ahead and start doing it.
From the Planning Department?
That's what we, that's what I was told.
Who did you speak to?
I spoke to Shannon or Sharon. She was a younger woman, and she was one of the, I guess, a trainee for, for an inspect, for doing inspections on multiple properties.
So that's not Planning Department, that's Code Compliance?
Okay.
Is that what you're talking about?
I'm guessing. I, I went to the building right over here.
There's no one named Shannon or Sharon in code enforcement?
I spoke to a younger woman there. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I'm from Florida. I, I left my whole life back there. I left my kids back there. I packed everything up to come over here and start my business and follow my dream. And I wouldn't risk all the money that I have in here. I lost my family because of this. I mean, these past two years have been really rough. I, I wouldn't do something that's so dumb like that that would get, that I would know that would get my permit denied. You know, I, I asked questions. I did make a mistake, and I didn't get a written agreement on it, but I wouldn't just go ahead and do something that I know that was gonna screw me up at the end.
Okay, so have you ever contacted the Sheriff's Department and spoken with Natalie? Because we have letters in here that she wrote you saying you need to come in and take care of your background and...
I did not. That, I will accept that. That was human error with just everything so overwhelming, getting the site prepped. I was the only one taking care of everything. I, it completely passed by, and I, I completely forgot about it. And then finally, when I realized, hey, I haven't heard anything from the county, I haven't heard anything, I went and I did the mailing address change and all that, and I figured out that they still had my old Citrus Heights address.
Okay. Then, did you take care of all the Code Compliance issues? Did you fence? Because we don't see fencing in any of those.
Yes, the fencing is up.
You did fence it?
The fencing is up. I did the erosion control. I threw straw around for erosion control over the winter and all that.
How close was your grow in 2016 to the property line as, as it was eventually established?
Well, the setback is supposed to be a 75 foot, if I'm not mistaken. I was only 40, 40 to 45 feet away from the actual property line.
Okay, so I think these are probably your originals. Do you have copies? Because if we look at these, we need to have a copy for the Planning Department and legal counsel to keep on file.
I do not have, but I can't make...
This is your only set?
Yeah.
Okay.
After the hearing, we can run copies of those for our record and then give the original back to the appellant.
With respect to this mailing address, what, what address did you list on your registration form?
The original when I applied for it. It was a PO box that I had in Citrus Heights when I was living there. When I first started the whole thing here in Calaverse, I was driving back and forth on a daily basis until I finally found a home to reside here. And that's when it completely passed. I forgot about it, and I didn't change my mailing address until I realized, hey, I'm not getting anything from accounting.
When, when did you stop receiving mail at the Citrus Heights address?
Well, I never received anything there.
When did you establish a new mailing address?
I established it, I think I opened the new PO box around February of this year, but like I said, just being overwhelmed with everything, I could have sworn that I put that mailing address on the application. And obviously, I didn't. So then I went back, I think it was on August 11th, and changed it to my new one.
You said you had PO box in Citrus Heights? This looks like it's a home address.
Well, it was a UPS store, so the UPS stores don't use PO boxes. Their address and then suite numbers, so and so.
Now, so I can try and get clear. Who told you, who all told you that you could go ahead and grade while your permit application was on file?
When I was speaking to the younger woman there that was working at the...
And that, that was, I guess, Code Compliance?
Yes.
And anybody at Public Works say you could?
No, they didn't mention anything there. They, she just took my application. She told me that everything seemed was perfectly fine. I paid the fee and I was on my way.
And the subject of whether you could grade now or not, it just didn't come up with Public Works?
No. But once again, that was my fault for not verifying and doing all so.
I'm not clear on one point. Have you ever completed the background check or submitted the paperwork?
No, I did not.
Why not?
Once again, it completely passed over me and all that stuff. I never received any, since I put the wrong mailing address, I never actually got any paperwork to, to tell me, hey, I had to go do it or anything. And like I said, I've just been so overwhelmed that I completely forgot about it.
Well, you got notice of today's hearing, right?
Yes. Well, after, once I changed my mailing address, then I got in all the, I started receiving papers from...
And one of those was a denial letter, correct?
Yes.
And one of the bases for the denial is the lack of background check?
Yes.
So when you got that, you didn't go to the sheriff's office?
I got, that was once again my thing, but there's been certain things. I, I dealt with a family member passing away back home, so I've been having to go back and forth and get everybody situated and move their belongings back to the Dominican Republic and stuff like that. So I've just, it's been just, I haven't had time to do things. And I know that's not an excuse to... and stuff like that. So I've just, it's been just, I haven't had time to do things. And I know that's not an excuse to clear up the things that I have not done.
Let's go back to the original plot plan that was submitted by the third-party. You're telling us that that seventy-five feet setback that it shows, or I assume it's at least a seventy-five feet setback. It is on the bottom portion. Can't quite tell on the right-hand side. It looks like it's more than seventy-five. The property line you thought you had was a fence, correct? And how is it that you found the fence wasn't on the right property line?
I'm sorry?
How did you find out that the fence wasn't in the correct spot?
Well, wasn't in the correct spot when they came and did the assessment and measured out the property and found the corners for the property and all that.
The surveyor?
Yeah.
And that was the March of this year, correct? I think that's all I have.
Well, with respect to the grading permit, you got a notice saying you had to have an engineered plan, right? Have you gotten that?
I have not yet.
So there's never been an actual grading permit issued, is that correct?
There has not been one issued. I did get back, like I said, I think I handed you guys the paper. They're saying that it was denied because I moved more than a thousand yards, but the estimated cut material here was nine hundred and sixty-seven yards. And then the fill material was eight hundred and forty yards, but for some reason, with this application, they're saying that they're adding both of those up together and succeeding the thousand yards when really all I was doing was using the same dirt that I cut to pack on the other side of the hill, so I never went over a thousand yards. I used the same dirt.
Have you gone back to them and explained that?
The gentleman that I was, since I've been in and out of town, I have a gentleman that I use his tractors to do all the work and stuff like that. And he went and spoke to them because that's what he does for a living, is grading and build communities and stuff like that. And, you know, just general dirt work. And he went and spoke to them and tried to see why they were doing this, but he never got an answer on that. I just, I haven't had time to go deal with everything myself.
Manager, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
On the application, it was dated March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. It says, project information, purpose of grading, grow area as built. When did you do the grading?
I started grading, I believe, towards the end of April.
So the photos were taken on April twentieth? And the grading was, looks like was completed, or at least it was certainly well underway on April twentieth?
Yeah, the grading only took a couple days to do the whole plot.
Okay. So why was it considered an as-built plan?
Well, I put grow area and then the different color ink on there. If I'm not mistaken, that was from Public Works. She wrote that on.
Okay. All right, and then, just for the record, it was October fourth, two thousand seventeen, that the Public Works Department returned your plan saying that they are incomplete, that they needed engineering.
But once again, my question is why am I required a grading permit if I move less than a thousand yards? A grading permit is only required when you move more than a thousand yards.
Well, that's not quite true. A grading permit's required. An engineered plan is required for over...
The engineered plan, I'm sorry.
So, okay. I'm gonna give these to staff. So we can make one copy of it for the file and we'll get it back to you.
Okay. If you, if there's no further questions and you don't have any more comments at this moment, I'd like to go to the public for comment and then we'll bring you back for the rebuttal. Please, you're not. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so if anybody from the public would like to speak?
My name is Dan Bosse. I've lived in Spring Hills for twenty-two years. We've had two marijuana busts in where people have come up from Stockton and busted into houses in the Golden Gate Drive and actually strong-armed people for marijuana. We were not notified that he was growing marijuana at all. There was no notice that was sent out to these people. I got a notice, but nobody else in the Spring Hills got a notice about this. I don't understand how somebody gets away with this. This man's running around with Florida plates and he's in California? Come on! He should be putting on California plates if he's going to be in a business in California. His wife runs up and down the road like she owns the road. It is a single-lane road. She ran me off the road. There's got to be some justice going on in here. There was nobody notified that he was growing marijuana. And there's a lot of people that are not happy about this in this Spring Hills area, for one thing. I don't understand how this has got pushed under the rug and he is able to grow marijuana. I think he's come to California because it's legal to grow marijuana here in California and it wasn't legal to grow marijuana in Florida. Now, where is that right? To grow marijuana? You can grow it in Florida? No, you can't grow it in Florida. It's not right. How can he get here? I had to call the Highway Patrol because his contractor parked a vehicle out there that was blocking the road with a backhoe which was on it originally and had to have it because it was in a dangerous area. And it was on my easement area. Now, this is all getting out of hand. This gentleman lives, I can hear his radio at full blast from my house. I'm at twenty-five seventy-five. He is just up the road from me. This needs to stop.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
No, because nobody else got any notices.
Do you want to address public notices or do you want to just...
Well, we noticed everyone within three hundred feet of the property boundaries, as required by law.
But everybody in, I talked to people in the Valley Springs, in the Spring Hills area that said they would've liked to have known about it because they have...
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to come up to the mic for a moment, please, but I need you to kind of calm down just a little bit. I understand the anger.
People in the Valley Springs area, they have kids. In the Spring Hills area, they have kids and they would like to see and be notified of this because they don't want their kids have to be dealing with drug dealers and people from Stockton coming up from that area and have to deal with these people.
Okay. We, the only thing that I wanted to address with you is that by law, we have to public notice within three hundred feet of the subject property.
Three hundred feet?
I understand. Okay, hold on just a moment.
These are five-acre lots.
That's fine, but we also publish it in the media, public notices. So it does go out for the public that doesn't live within that area. It was noticed in the public.
That's not enough.
Okay.
That's not enough.
I'm sorry.
These are five-acre lots. Three, you're talking about two houses then, is all you're talking about?
I don't make the laws.
These are five-acre lots.
I understand.
Okay, five-acre lots are not gonna get but one or two people. That's all you're gonna get. I didn't know this guy was even doing marijuana. He's been growing marijuana for two years!
Okay.
Why didn't I know that?
It was publicly noticed in the papers. Everybody was out there.
Well, the actual cultivation registration process did not require public notice. It was not included as part of the ordinance that the board adopted a year and a half ago. The the appeal notice goes out as required by state law. We have the ability to extend that. But we typically follow what the law requires. Yeah, I think it's clear that, and this is sort of a little bit off-topic, but, you know, your recommendation and the board's consideration, you know, that we've sort of discovered that some of these cultivation areas are inappropriate. And that's where the direction that we're moving now.
This notice should've been put on the mailbox, like everything else that Calaveras does. Should've been put on the mailbox so that everybody in that Spring Hills area would've known about it.
Well, I'm not aware of the county posting notice on mailboxes.
There is a mailbox there and a lot of people go to that mailbox and a lot of people would've liked to have known about this.
Okay, I can't, so basically, public comment period is limited to five minutes. I've let you go a lot longer than that because I wanted to try and answer some of your questions. I'm sorry, but we do need to carry on with the hearing and thank you for your testimony today. Okay, so if there's any, no further public comment? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back for any rebuttals from you or the appellant. Do you have anything further you'd like to state?
Just a few points. It appears that the grading was done with a permit as evidenced by the as-built grading application and that the grading was done by the time code compliance got out there. And it also appears that the appellant has admitted to having done the grading without a permit. And the adjustment of the cultivation area to be allowed under the urgency ordinance, a valid current grading permit had to come in with the application for that part of N seven to be met. And while the overall cultivation area appears to have remained the same size or smaller, it is the cultivation site which cannot be expanded and drying is a part of cultivation. So by doing it on the pad, which is overall larger than the original cultivation area, it has expanded the cultivation site, which is a violation of N seven.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Ben, it seems to me you just started off, and I'm sure I misheard you, that he did grade with a permit.
Without.
Without a permit.
Without.
That's what I expected to hear, but I wasn't sure. It does appear that your parcel shape has been vindicated. But where the, where the boundary lines are, whether he needed to adjust because of the boundary line setback request, I don't see where we're clear on that.
The point I was trying to make with the boundary lines and the aerial images that the county took was more to just demonstrate the relative change in regards to those lines, because if there was such a large disparity, then even if the parcel lines on the county's images aren't exactly accurate, there would still be more of a difference between the two aerials of where the cultivation area originally was and then where the graded.
So if I understand it, you're saying that there was no, from what you can tell, there was no need to adjust to conform to the seventy-five-foot setback?
Not necessarily. Whether or not there was a need, it just doesn't appear that the grading moved the cultivation area at all.
I see.
So if it was for meeting the setbacks, it doesn't appear to have changed anything.
So any further questions? Okay, the appellant have anything further they'd like to state for closing, to rebuttal anything that was said?
I'd like to ask a question. His last statement, if I understand it right, was no matter whether there was a need to adjust for the setback requirement, the actual grading that was done did not move the actual grow site significantly reflecting any move because of setbacks. Could you speak to that if you could understand what I just said?
Well, I mean, the only argument that I have to that is I had their survey done. The people were there doing it and we went, we went based off of the fence line that was put up years ago. I didn't put the fence up. I do not own the property. So I went based off that. And then from there, from where the original grow site was, from the fence line to there, there was seventy-five feet. But come to find out that, like I mentioned earlier, my fence line is not my property line. It's actually pushed thirty feet more into my side of the property line. So from my measurements and from the surveyor's measurements, it only put me forty-five feet away from there, so I had to move the whole grow in order for me to comply.
And so your testimony is that you did move the grow site?
Yes.
At least thirty feet?
Yes. Now, from where the peak of the pot started to where the actual property line is supposed to be, now there's seventy-five feet from where there is now.
Ben, maybe you could put up the before and aftershocks?
If you can see on the bottom right-hand corner how there's more pots coming out to the bottom right, if you switches over to the grading side, all that side's cut off.
That's moved, or at least if the...
There's a significant difference there that you can show that it has been moved over to the left.
So it was down in what's now light gray from this shot?
Yes.
And now it's, and then it's moved up, okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So it was the eastern property line.
The southern eastern, yeah, the eastern property line is what's getting me there.
The one that's along the right side of it?
Yes.
Okay, and so the line was apparently thirty feet further to the west?
Yes.
And so you had seventy-five feet from the, from your fence line, your old fence line?
My old fence line.
And so then you graded the site. Ben, could you go to the next slide? And that red line stays the same, even though it may or may not be the actual property line, but the grading is still in that same area. And then the next picture that you had, the Google image, shows the cultivation on the far eastern side of that graded area. So you didn't move the cultivation site, or the cultivation area, did you?
Yes.
But it's right up against the very same edge where it was before.
Exactly, but you see where the slopes are at coming down to the bottom. There was pots down there. At the very, at the very bottom right-hand corner of that, I had pots three feet over to this side. Can I see the laser?
Three feet or thirty feet?
Three feet over. Well, I...
But you're saying that it's thirty feet off?
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying.
So you're still cultivating within the setback area?
Well, what I'm trying to say...
Or you were?
What I'm trying to state is that that last pot right there was only forty-five feet away from my property line. So I had to move all of this here over thirty feet in order for me to do that, to comply.
You flip back to the post-picture? But the grading is, the grading is where the old pots used to be.
Well, if you see, there's a slope here where all the haze at. At the very bottom of that slope towards the right, there was pots down there last year. And I mean, it doesn't show much of a significant difference on aerial, but I mean, how can you tell thirty feet on aerial picture?
So, Ben, go back to the previous picture. The closest area from the property line to the cultivation site is basically this dimension right here.
Well, the bottom side was really the side that was closest.
Well, this is further away. This is a greater distance from here to here than it is from here to here.
Once again.
That's the closest point.
I was going by based on what the surveyor told me out there.
Could you, let me finish, please. Ben, could you please move to the next slide? So this grading area, this line here, pretty much represents the same line of what you graded the year before. And then the next picture shows that whole area filled with cannabis plants. And that line is somewhere right along here. And so this dimension from here to here is no different than, please go back, from here to here. And so there wasn't any change in relocation of the site. It was still cultivated in the same area, it appears. It was still cultivated in the same area, it appears, as what was grown the year before. And that's why, well, part of the reason why we felt that it wasn't done for the purpose of relocation of the cultivation area. But the fact of the matter is, in order to have approval to do that, they need to submit the grading plan to us first. This is all done after the fact. No one notified us that we were, that they were relocating the grading area, and they didn't get a grading permit in advance. And so that was the reason, the primary reason for denial of this permit.
Before I dug the first hole to start the whole grading process, I went and I asked all my questions that I needed to. I was told that I needed a grading permit and all that stuff. I went and I filled out all the paperwork that I needed. I had the surveyor come out and do the suspected cut and fill measurements and all that stuff, and how big the parcel was going to be, the plan that I handed to you guys before I dug the first hole. My mistake was that after I submitted all my paperwork, I started grading before I actually received an approved grading permit. But once again, I was told that since we're in a business that is seasonal, if I waited for me to get my grading permit, I would miss out on this season, on a season that I would still have to pay taxes on whether I grew or not. So that's pretty much what I was told is, we had kind of a leeway where we were able to do it, and then anything afterwards that popped up, we would have to fix it. I mean, I submitted everything correctly. The only thing that I got back was that now I'm required an engineer plan. But once again, why is my cannabis cultivation site any different from somebody building a home or anything like that? The requirement is if you move more than 1,000 yards of soil, you need an engineer plan. I did not do that, so why am I required an engineer plan?
Well, and that you haven't tried to work out with the planning department, except that one visit by.
Yes.
Somebody else. Were there, were there plants growing under the tree at the closest corner to that property line?
Yes, there was pots underneath that tree there where you see on that top right-hand corner of the grow side. I know that the aerial doesn't show much, but if you see on the bottom right-hand corner there, that little triangle that sticks out, if you can zoom in any way, you can see those pots. Those pots are 12 feet apart from each other. And if you can see, the little triangle has three or four pots that stick out to the bottom right-hand side, that's the spot where I wasn't complying in. So we had to move everything over like that, and to make it more easier and more comfortable for me to work, instead of working on a slope like that, that's why I figured I would grade it. I did everything thinking about the future to be here long-term and to be able to work in Calaveras County comfortably.
But where those pots were in the corner you're speaking of became a graded area?
Yes.
It is the, as I understand it, it's the down slope to the, to the pad? When we see the light.
That, that light, you see where it's darker gray and then there's a wider portion of it? That's the actual slope of the grading part there.
And that's coming, that's going down to the pad?
That's going downhill, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, this is the fill slope here, and this is the cut slope up here. So the earth was moved from this area and pushed down this area.
Okay.
That's fill down here.
That's what I was trying to figure out what was up and what was down.
Okay, I kind of, you have further questions, any new questions? Because we're kind of beating this one down now.
Yeah, I did have a couple. When you got done with all the grading, did you wind up with a bigger pad than you had before?
Yes, I did. The pad is 4,000 square feet.
What have you used the expanded area for, if anything?
For drying purposes. I did not cultivate on there. I stayed within my 15,000 square foot.
Okay, but you did use the part of the new pad for drying purposes?
Yes, I did. I did use that. That was the purpose for it. I was hoping so that I can build a warehouse there to have working area and stuff like that, because I really don't have any shade down there or anything to work in there. I do not reside in the home that's on the property, so it's not like I have the right to take my product up there and do whatever I like. There's a family that lives there.
Got you.
Like you mentioned, that my wife ran him off the road. My wife does not live here. I don't have a wife. The people, my landlord lives at the home. I just work there. I reside, I, I lease their portion of the property out so that I can grow. I'm not the one that lives there.
Thank you.
Okay. If, I think, if there's no further questions, then I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, bring it back to deliberations to the commissioners.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one, please?
Actually, I've just closed public hearings, so we need to keep going here.
Do you know that, yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir.
Down below goes to Hogan.
Please.
And that is DLM line, both down below.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've heard a lot today about the grading, and in my opinion, the grading really upsets me. He did it without a permit. But we're spinning our wheels on the grading. We need to deny him on the fact that he never went to the sheriff's department, and he didn't do the 10-day, he didn't tell us he changed his address. So we're beating around the bush about this grading, which totally upsets me. It's Calaveras County. I don't want him to run my county. It's beautiful up here, but he never went to the sheriff's department. So why are we beating this part up?
I think we do have a failure to comply with the rules on changing address. We do have a failure to complete the background check. And with respect to the grading, it's not permissible to grade, to expand the cultivation site, which includes areas for drying, not just growing. And so just based on that alone, the grading was impermissible.
No, the hearing's closed.
And it was done without a permit, which had to be acquired upfront and wasn't. So I'm, I think we have a violation on all three.
I agree. There's three violations, and they seem to be pretty clear.
I also agree.
Okay, so, I do too. Can you read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2017-105, thus denying 2016-729 appeal, thereby holding the planning director's determination to deny application 2016-729.
Thank you.
So moved.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Peter, would you like to read the appeal process?
So this decision is final, and it's appealed within 15 calendar days from today's date.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move directly into item number four, 2016-601. We have a letter to request a continuance on this one. We, we actually have a letter for item number four and five to continue both of them. Would you like to take them both together, vote on them separately, and decide whether or not you want to do a continuance? The continuance request is the same, the appeals are separate.
I think for the continuance, I know I, I've talked about consolidation. I know I've talked about consolidation for on the merits, but I think for a continuance that you can consolidate if you want to.
That's what I was doing, sorry.
I agree.
Okay.
I have no problem.
Okay, hold on one moment, please. Okay, so Paul, do you have anything to say about the continuance? Do you want to discuss any part of that?
Personally, I don't. I believe possibly some of the other county department staff might have something to say about that. I would like to have them heard. I personally don't have a problem. I would defer to the, to the planning director on this.
Okay.
Let me just, as a timeline, they were denied on October 23rd. The appeal came in on November 7th. We sent a letter on November 13th advising them that the appeal date would be today, and we received the request for the appeal last Thursday, November 11th.
Thank you. Okay, so do you have something you want to say? I will come to you in a moment. Okay, I'll give you an opportunity.
Good afternoon. The sheriff's office is opposed to the continuance. Sheriff's office had to scramble to get our paperwork together in order to fit within the timeline. This was somewhat of a complex series of grows, and we had to actually send staff over to the planning department to work with them to get this prepared. And while I agree, the complexity of it took some time, I want to kind of caution the planning commission on a couple of things. The staff is canceling appointments to attend these hearings. Last-minute cancellations are problematic for staff. In addition, one of the issues we have with the ordinance overall is continuances until, as a reminder, until people are invalidated or disqualified, they're allowed to continue to cultivate marijuana. And that is one of the weaknesses of the current urgency ordinance that we're hopefully addressing. So I am, for a manner of efficiency, I'm opposed to continuing these and stretching these processes out any further than they, than they need to be. Thank you.
Madam Chair, a quick comment. Recently, the Snowden case, you guys may remember that one, it went to Superior Court on a writ, and the writ was denied on all grounds except for one. And the one ground was that the board supervisors should have granted a continuance because of unavailability of counsel. So if you guys are going to make a, and so it's going to have to be heard by supervisors again, on, based on the court's ruling. So if you guys are going to make, if the commission is going to make a determination to deny the continuance, I hope that you can make findings reflecting what Captain Macedo said, as well as the right of the public to appear. And any other such findings you might wish to make in order to support your decision to deny the continuance when, when there's an issue with unavailability or lack of counsel.
I have a question, Paul. When did the appellant receive the staff report?
I think it was the same day. I, I'm sure it's the same day I sent it out to you, which I think was last Tuesday.
So the request for continuance was received on the 7th? When was last, what was last Tuesday?
Was it last? The 5th. They received it the same day you received it, and I am seeing, my time is getting lost in here. And I don't know whether that was last week or the week before on Tuesday.
This, this, these two reports came out later than, they were not included with your packet that was delivered two weeks prior, so it did come out last week. I think, I believe Tuesday was.
Yeah, it didn't come out on the regular Friday, it came out the following Tuesday.
Okay, and then you also mentioned that there was staff that wanted to speak. Were you referencing Captain Macedo, or code compliance, or another department?
I was referencing Captain Macedo.
Okay, thank you.
Code has made time to appear to testify today.
In the back of the room, code compliance, would you like to speak regarding the continuance? No? Okay. Okay, so I would like to bring up the appellant to give her an opportunity to explain her reasonings for continuance.
Hi, my name is Tawali Vitulala. Good, good morning. And I hear like a clicking sound, and it's probably someone doing a pen. When you're sitting in the crowd, it's just a little distracting. So if I could ask whoever's doing this, and you're near a microphone. I'd really appreciate it, just so I can get my thoughts together and make sure that I give a good presentation. I appreciate it, sorry. With regards to the continuance, I was very nervous upon receiving the staff report, the sheriff's report. I mean, just everything came into play, and I'm like, oh, wow, blown away. And at first, I was thinking, you know what, maybe I should seek legal counsel, for fear that I'm not going to be represented properly. I'm up against everyone, it seems. But after doing or trying to make sense of everything, and this is who I am, and this is what you're going to get, I figure, let's go for it. So if, I'll deny any requests for the continuance at this point. I will go and do it on my own.
Okay. Everybody's good with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then we will open the hearing and let Paul begin with his presentation, and then we will go to you.
Okay, this is the first one. This is appeal number 2016-601. Lai Vitulala, Can I Help You Incorporated, appealing a denial of a medical cannabis cultivation registration by the planning director. The project is located out in the Salt Springs reservoir area. It's 166.11 acre site, it's located at 10777 Walker Trail Road. It's actually right there, Copperopolis. It's approximately one mile northeast of where Walker Trail and Hogan Dam Road intersect. It's portions of sections 22 and 27 of Township Three North Ranger Leavman East of the Mount Diablo Basin Meridian, actually kind of out, far away from almost everyone here. You come in on Hogan Dam Road, you hit Walker Trail, come in on Hunt Road, you hit Hogan, Hogan Dam Road, and then Walker Trail again. We're coming from Copperopolis, you go out Rock Creek Road, Salt Springs Valley Road, and then on to Hogan Dam Road, and you end up at the site out there. This is actually one of three parcels. This project is one of three parcels that the registrant has out in that area and which she is cultivating on. This is located on parcel number 39, which is this one right here. On May 6th in 2016, Can I Help You signed a lease with AK Builders and Coatings to lease one acre of land on each of these parcels to cultivate 22,000 square feet of cannabis. Subsequent to that, on January 1st, 2017, Can I Help You executed another lease with the landowner, and that was for the entire area of each of these parcels.
Say that, say that date again?
The date that.
You just said January?
It, there was a second lease on January 1st, 2017. Okay. But going back, on June 28th of 2016, the applicant submitted applications on all three of these parcels for 22,000 square feet of cultivation area. With that application, came a letter from Barnett Environmental. It was dated June 27th, 2016. There was one to the planning department, there was also one to the water board. And in that letter, Barnett explains that Can I Help You is his client, and also explains that Can I Help You has been cultivating on all of these three parcels. The combined cultivation area at that time that Can I Help You had been cultivating, Barnett estimated at 104 to 156,000 square feet. Now, in order to comply with county regulations, Barnett explained that actually 13 separate cultivation areas would be reduced into one single cultivation area on each parcel, and that cultivation area was to be 22,000 square feet. That reduction was to occur on to an existing parcel. On our parcel, right here, the cultivation area that was designated as the parcel to be cultivated is Area 12, right here. Now, subsequent to that, at this summer, it was in August 14th, we were reviewing this project, and we found that the existing sites that had been proposed to be eliminated once the 22,000 square foot grows were developed on each one of the separate parcels had not in fact been eliminated. That reduction had not occurred. At that time, we issued a denial. The appellant protested the denial, stating that these other grows did not belong to her, and the denial was rescinded on September 8th. After that, there was an inspection out here that occurred on September 21st. It was inspected by code, this parcel, and they found one violation which was corrected in short order, I think it was just a matter of three or four days. On October 4th, code compliance and the county sheriff went out and basically eradicated all of the illegal cultivation areas that were occurring out on these three parcels. During that process, they discovered that the illegal grow areas up here, the unregistered grow areas, were actually connected to the registered grow sites. In addition, there were water diversions occurring out there. And other things they discovered led them to go and seek a search warrant, which brought them back. And subsequent to that, all three of the appellant's cultivation areas were abated. During that action, there were certain observations made, certain violations of the urgency ordinance were observed at that time. And because of that, we basically wrote a denial based upon what was found out there. And that is what we have up here on the screen. Failure to ensure the health and safety of employees and neighboring property owners, failure to comply with state statutes related to sanitation, health, safety of agricultural workers, there was camping on site, and other violations of federal, state, or local law, which basically was failure to get permits. Just to familiarize us with the immediate area out there, we have the cultivation area, we have the barn here. To the side of the barn, there is a hoop house, actually a drying tent. You can kinda see the frames there, we'll get back to that shortly. There's a water tank up here, there's a water line coming in from parcel 41, which is the adjacent parcel. Let's see here, on the right page, which is this. The first reason for denial was violations of health and safety and sanitation requirements. Under Title 8, Section 33457 of the California Code Regulations, agricultural operations involving hand labor, excuse me, agricultural operations involving hand labor, and I got this together. All agricultural operations involving hand labor must have toilet and hand washing facilities located within a quarter mile or a five-minute walk from the work area, whichever is shorter. Those hand washing facilities are required to be located within close proximity to the toilet. The employers are required to notify each employee where the location of those sanitation facilities are at, where the potable water is at. The employers are required to ensure that employees use those sanitation facilities. In addition to that, hand washing facilities must have potable water, and a cleaning agent, single-use towels, sign indicating where the water is for, that the water is for hand washing purposes only. And potable water must be provided, and dispensed in single-use drinking cups or by fountains. What was found out there on October 4th during the abatement action was that on our parcel that's under discussion right now, there were no toilet facilities provided at all. And we had defecation occurring out on the parcel. The requirement is that that toilet be located no further than a five-minute or a quarter mile away from the work area. The nearest toilet located to this work area, our parcel, would be on the adjacent parcel that the appellant also has. There is a toilet over there. This is actually 2,000 feet, that is over a third of a mile, and I believe that would be over a five-minute walk, so when it comes to that, the appellant failed to meet that requirement. Requirement for hand washing, assuming that there was a toilet located in the immediate work area, say the barn or the cultivation area, a hand washing facility would be required to have, so it would be required to have a sign that says, you know, the water's for hand washing only, and it would be required to have single-use towels. The only thing we saw out there, in the photo evidence that came anywhere close to that, was this area outside the barn, which appears to be a dishwashing area. And we don't see those things that are required of a hand washing area in the photo. Potable water is also required, there was no potable water visible on the site. You do see that there's a can here, and it looks like a cooler there. Outside, going back to the dishwashing area, there was a bottle there, and another cooler there, but again, we don't see a fountain or single-use cups as required by the state statute. So, in failing to require employees to use the portable toilet for defecation, failing to provide hand washing facilities, and failing to provide potable water as required by the state statute, the appellant does not fulfill the requirements of either Section 165B or Section 165H. In addition to those sanitation and health and safety violations, we observed in the photographs, and the sheriff observed out on the site, that there was sleeping all over, camping out. That is actually a bed underneath a tree. This, there's two shots here, taking out the water tank, that's a bedroll, that's a bedroll. See the short little tree right there? That's the same tree you're gonna see right here, there's a bedroll here. There is an actual bed sitting right here with a sleeping, you know, sleeping roll on it. We found, they found an area out that was covered with a plastic tarp, there's four people sleeping there. Inside the barn, there's a bed there. And within the drying tent, there was a bed here, and down at the other end, there is a sleeping bag down there. All of that, all of the, all of the bedrolls, all of the beds, combined with the food that was out on the site, the dishwashing, it just led us to believe that long-term occupancy was occurring on the site, and people were actually sleeping there. This is a photograph that came in from the neighbor, Mr. Ken Johnson, who lives along the Southern Property Line. That was forwarded to you in the staff report, and Mr. Johnson testified that camping had been occurring on this parcel for approximately five to six months. Now, the other reason for denial here was violations of other local laws. Under County Code, Section 1504.050, the California Building Code, Section 105.1, requires the owner or agent to obtain a building permit prior to erecting any structure out on the property in excess of 120 square feet. There was a metal barn that was erected out here. The permit was applied for on January 6th of 2015. It was, the permit was actually issued on January 25th of 2015. However, that permit was never picked up, and it expired on 8/24 of 2015. Effectively, this is an unpermitted structure. The other structure that was out on the site was the drying tent. This also requires a permit. We have aerials here from the sheriff, that was taken on April 19th of this year, and you can see that there, the frame is erected at that time. So this is something that should've been taken care of. It is a violation of local laws, not to go and get your building permit before you erect any of these structures. So, based upon, for those reasons, the denial was issued on October 23rd of this year. The appeal came in on November 6th of this year, recently. And in the appeal, the appellant explains that she does have a portable restroom, and it's always available for use on her property, and expressed that there was a need for better communication, to have better behavioral efforts on the part of her employees to use the toilets. She explained that there's a lot of areas out on this site to inspect, she can't see it all, she's about 100 acres. The environment is a big concern to her, and that open defecation on her property is strictly prohibited by her employees. Now, when Code and sheriff's officers were out there, they did not, like I say, find a portable restroom or toilet facility of any type on the parcel. The appellant states she has a hand washing station, which is what we're looking at right here, to ensure proper hygiene. The only issue with this is that this does not have a couple of the requirements that are necessary to meet a hand washing station, and that is signage saying that this is for, this water's for hand washing only, and also a single-use towels for drying off, so that failed to meet the requirements, ordinance. In regards to camping, the appellant explains that the parcel was in the process of being harvested. Her manager had been gone from September 27th until October 4th. Because his absence was less than 14 days, the appellant put forward that no violation of camping provisions had occurred. Additionally, she states that she did not notice any makeshift beds or sleeping bags during tour visits to the ranch, and suspects the employees picked up their bedding and stowed it in cars during the day. I don't believe that the manager's purported absence is any indicator of whether there was actually camping occurring on the site. We did have large quantities of food, we have areas here for people to eat, there was a large amount of trash that was located on this parcel. I think with the appellant's rebuttal letter, she actually states that this trash is hauled off every two weeks, so that may just be a couple of days short of every two weeks, but that certainly indicates a large amount of trash being generated out there. For those reasons, we believe that camping actually did occur out on the site. In regards to the permit issued, the appellant explains that the permit was issued to the landlord who erected the barn. Regarding the hoop house and the tent structure, she explained that she was in contact with the planning and building departments on, asked how she should obtain a permit for these structures. She has one here, and one on her other parcel. There was an email chain that confirms that she was talking back and forth with planning between September 14th and September 22nd. Additionally, she claims a building department representative told her that a temporary storage tent, such as the one she desired to erect, was never required to obtain a permit, and because of the inclement weather, she went ahead and put up the covers on the tent, over the tent frame. She does not name who the person is, or the date, or even the department that she was talking to, in regards to the building department, that conversation there. Somebody told her it wasn't necessary to have this structure permitted. In the email chain, there is actually a couple of comments where she has told that this is a commercial structure, and that it will require a permit. As you can see, this sheriff's area was just taken in April 19th of this year, shows that that frame right there was erected long ago, long before that email chain began. In conclusion, based upon the findings out there by Code Compliance and the sheriff, the appellant was denied for violations of employee health and safety standards, illegal camping, and failure to comply with local laws. The original denial included the violation for inadequate fencing, we reviewed that, but that reason for denial was subsequently withdrawn. However, we believe that the reasons we just presented right here are valid reasons for the denial of this registration application.
Okay. Commissioners have questions?
Paul, the submission from Ken Johnson...
Yes, sir.
...which pictures, and he alleges that it pictures pipes stealing water from a adjacent property, and tracks those pipes, as I understand it, to this parcel. Is, I have two questions. Is that a violation of state or local law? And number two, is it something, and this is more directed to the county council, is allegations such as this that come into the process during our consideration of appeal, can we consider this as included in the violation of state and local law grounds for the...
I mean, I think that when, if you have evidence that's presented to you from the public, and you're convinced that it adds to whatever the planning director has provided, I think you can weigh the evidence and use the evidence. I don't think it has to come only from the planning director.
And this would be a violation of some law?
Well, that's a different question. And clearly, I would agree with Julie that, you know, any evidence that's submitted through the hearing process, you can consider. I don't know if that is a violation of law or not. If it's water that's coming from her property from one parcel to another...
Well, the allegation is that this comes from an adjoining property that she doesn't own.
Again, I don't know that, and I would not rely on something unless we had all the facts before us.
But that's the allegation that...
I don't know enough about, I would have, it's not something I could do without research.
I'd like to make a comment on that. I started to track this down, and beginning this year, and I think it is basically the deadlines were, if I remember correctly, late this summer, people who were diverting water were required to register that diversion with the Water Quality Control Board. They are in the process of basically building a database, and having people who are diverting, and there are legal diversions that do occur, they're trying to build a database and get this thing under control. So I sent an email to the Water Quality Control Board a couple of weeks ago, because I was thinking about this in terms of an addition to the denial. I didn't get a response from them. My concern was that if it was a registered diversion of any sort, and it was at that point legal, there would be no reason to bring that forward as a complaint against the appellant. So, lacking a response from the Water Quality Control Board, I elected to pass on that. And that, if I had a recommendation, it would be to leave that alone.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, on that subject, though, her application indicates that she has a source of water as wells, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, if she has changed the world such that she's now piping water in from somebody else's ground to this parcel, why isn't that an alteration of the condition of premises that should've been reported, and failure to report it to ground for denial?
I would agree with you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Would you like to hear from the appellant?
Yes.
Ken, come on in, please.
Would you like to hear from the sheriff first, or would you like to...
Oh, yeah, we probably should. Sorry about that. Thank you, Ethan.
Good morning, Jim Macedo from the sheriff's office. This is gonna sound like a punt, but I am gonna punt to county council, I'm sorry, county code enforcement. They can talk to specific code violations that they saw, they have expertise in that area, and then I would close out with criminal violations, and/or I may be able to answer some questions about water and connections that were photographed and evidence of that, which kind of link all of these grows and parcels together. So I would ask the code enforcement come up and...
So who's gonna speak from code enforcement? Courtney? Anybody? Somebody? Anybody?
Courtney Minehart, Calaveras County Code Enforcement Officer. I don't know what questions you have of me to ask.
Well, we could start with you, guys went out and did an inspection.
So I went out there on the 21st, September 21st, and did an inspection, was met at the gate, and basically went around to the different sites. Very clean, nothing like what you saw on these pictures. She was picking up papers as we were walking that were just random little scraps. We did, towards the end of the... the tour, we were discussing she would want to put a resort in, and, you know...
A what?
A resort. Some sort of like a spa, whatever, because it was so beautiful and tranquil out there. Everything on that site was absolutely spotless. I did talk to her about the hoop house that you saw, which was just a drying tent that was partially erected. The framing's been there forever, or for a long time, according to the, I can never say her name, so.
Lai's.
Lai. And I told her, I said, you know, under the ordinance, you really need to get a permit for it. If it's got a tarp on it, it requires a permit. Those have changed, those requirements have changed. Now anything over 120 square feet is going to require a building permit. It's always been that way, but in the past, we had looked for a way to make it a little easier to do some of these. So a temporary hoop house permit was available. Other than that, like I said, the site was absolutely spotless. There was no signs of anybody camping. The barn was empty when I went there. On the other properties that you're going to look at, there was a tent in a trailer. Nobody was living in the trailer. The tent was, I was told, was for an office. I saw no bedrolls, no nothing on the property when I was there. When I went there 13 days later, it was a whole different picture.
I see. Did you make an appointment to see it on the 21st?
She actually made the appointment, yes.
Thank you.
Courtney, if you look at the pictures on the screen right now, you can see that the frame that was laying on the ground when you inspected is up. So I would infer from that that it was taken down prior to your visit.
This is not the picture of the tent that was erected after I went there. This one was there when I went and did my inspection. The one on 603 was the one that I have in the pictures that's laying down on the ground, that I specifically told her not to put up because I saw the string of emails saying that it was a commercial tent and that the building department was trying to figure out how exactly to accommodate a permit for such a structure.
Okay. So when you went back 13 days later, it looked like?
A third world country. It had garbage littered all over the place. It had, you know, obviously, there was pieces of toilet paper all over the place. It was disgusting. There was a deer hanging from one of the trees. The amount of garbage that was there was incredible. Again, it was spotless when I was there 13 days before. And I've got no clue, there was either a ton of people on this property, I mean, 30, 40, 50 people, to create the amount of trash that I saw. And I've got no idea how it could have gone from one way that I saw it to when I saw it 13 days later.
Was, were the plants ready to be cultivated, and a crew may have come in and cultivated?
They were getting close on the ones that, when I went out and did my inspection, they were getting close. We talked about it a little bit, and I wanted to say that she said that it was a couple more weeks before the cultivation process would start. And they did have some product hanging in this one here when I was there, but it was probably two or three strands of it, you know, lines of it.
Now, your second visit was without a reservation or contact, right?
Correct. And actually, the only reason that I stopped by on that day was because I was called on a greenhouse. And I remembered in the back of my mind when I was out there doing the inspection, that they had a greenhouse. Well, the greenhouse, and when I asked her about it, she said, no, that one was taken down. The greenhouse that I saw in the pictures that they were growing in, the previous year had been taken down. So when I drove out to the site, and as soon as I drove in, I saw the tent that the email was going around was fully erected and in use. It wasn't, it was just laying on the ground when I was out there 13 days earlier.
So you had an appointment when you went 13 days earlier, but you didn't on, when you went back?
Yes.
Okay.
I was called out by my partners with code enforcement.
Okay.
And was that visit with the sheriff, or my...
That was the one with the sheriff's department.
Okay.
And that, that, that tent that was yet to be erected, the frame you saw laying on the ground...
Paul, Mike?
The frames you saw laying on the ground, that was on parcel 603. That was not this project, correct?
Correct.
We're trying to separate out 601, which we're dealing with right now. So your mention of a deer, that's on another parcel.
Correct.
If the commission has no further questions for Courtney, I'd like to have Sabrina come up.
Okay.
Please.
Afternoon.
Sabrina Cable, code enforcement.
Hey, Sabrina, you heard the appellant say that, at least, actually, Paul restated her allegation that she had no control over the grows in the surrounding area. Did you observe anything in your several site visits that led you to draw any conclusions about that?
Yes. I actually, once Miguel rescinded the original denial, I issued a citation to the property owner for the quote-unquote "unregistered" grows on parcel 603. On September 12th, I went to, I actually met Lai at the property, because it's kind of difficult to find. She showed me, showed me where it was, met me at the road, and led me to the property. She was very on board with me issuing the citation for the unregistered cultivation. However, when we were at the property, I observed a quad coming from the unregistered area to her grow area. One couldn't further connect it in that way. Additionally, when Miguel rescinded her denial, he gave her a strict two-week deadline to come into compliance with the urgency ordinance. I can't remember exactly what the deadline was, but it was still, she was still working in that timeline on the 12th. When I met with her, I offered to take a look at her site and see if there was anything that I observed that needed to be corrected. And she said, no, I don't want you to go over there until it's all finished. So those were my observations that day.
What about when you came back during the eradication?
When we, we did an abatement warrant on October 4th, there was a large hoop house tent next to her registered area on 603. It was full of drying marijuana. However, her area, the registered area, had not been harvested. It was so thick with plants that the sheriff was concerned that someone might actually be hiding in it, because it had not, it was so thick, it had not been harvested.
And that's on 601?
603.
Okay.
But that, that's, we're just drawing the connection...
Which one was that on?
603. Trying to draw the connection between the unregistered sites and her registered sites. There were also water pipes going all around the property from her area, even up to the unregistered area on 603.
And what about the camping? It was indicated in her appeal letter that the camping only occurred for 14 days. Did you see anything that would refute that?
Just the sheer amount of food and trash, beer cans, and several sleeping bags all over both properties, 601 and 603.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask you. If you had issues, I need to be specific to 601 right now, because that's the hearing that we're on.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's what we'll be ruling on. So if you've got specific issues on 601, we really need to hear those.
Yeah, they were similar to the other. They're just the sheer amount of food, waste, trash. Like Courtney said, it was like a third world country. It smelled horrible. Like food had been rotting for several days. There was camping stuff everywhere. And like Paul showed, there were beds under trees. There were beds in the drying houses, all over.
Okay. 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 Does anybody else have any further questions?
We, I hope you will be around for the next hearing.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jim Macedo from the sheriff's office. Does the commission have our recommendation for denial regarding project 1601? So there was a narrative written there, and at the risk of reading that off to all of you, I'm going to assume that, that you read it.
Yes, we do.
Okay. If I could just reference a couple of paragraphs that I think would be important. Can, would you mind bringing the photograph of the barn back up, please? There was one of the inside of the barn.
Oh.
Yeah, absolutely.
I still have one on...
Okay. As it relates to this barn, I think this is what Ms. Cable was talking to. I don't see any way that all of that trash and refuse was done in 13 days. And as previously mentioned, what is not noted in the photos is the odor of the rotting food in this area. Just to the left of the photo, when facing it, there is a sleeping area where someone was sleeping with a firearm. To the right of the area, there was an incredible amount of rotting food that, based upon my experience and observations, would not have been generated within the last 13 days. Those containers were full of a variety of items, a lot of which was food, some of which was marijuana waste, marijuana in the process of being processed. And I want to address a matter that both code enforcement officers spoke of. The reason they keep referencing the other grow sites that are outside of this parcel, and while I realize you were hearing this parcel, there were numerous evidence items and numerous connections between all of these parcels, which was part of the reason we served a criminal search warrant in addition to the abatement warrant. They were connected by water. They were connected by evidence, by foot trails, by vehicle traffic, by similar camping-type equipment and living, living equipment. It was unequivocally clear to investigators at the time that these were connected. There was, there was physically lines going from a well to multiple marijuana grows on both sides of the well. So I wanted to address that with, with both of you.
That brings up a question. As far as you could tell, was there one well that served the three registered grow sites?
I personally saw one well, which is identified in the map, if I can find it again here. I have another photo in my, my packet here.
That photo that's on the screen, by the way, is...
Down on 603, down here?
Yeah, I'm looking at, my photo's a 603. You'll see the red, the red lines indicate water lines that are shooting out from a particular area. I believe the well was in, was in this area, and you can see the water lines that are going out from a particular well. In addition, I know there was a question asked earlier, there was, in our recommendation for denial, there was a notation of an illegal water diversion. I know that Mr. Groh talked about reaching out to the water board and not receiving a response from them. We actually, due to the large amount of water diversion issues, we actually sent sheriff's office staff to be trained in that, in that area. They did photograph it and note that in the creek bed, there was some plastic laid in there, a pump and a hose, and that technically qualifies as an illegal water diversion.
Was that on...
On 1601, the one we're speaking to.
Yeah, but not, I was asking earlier about one that the neighbor is saying came from his creek. This, this is on a creek that was on this parcel?
Unfortunately, yeah. Unfortunately, Mr. Ladish, until today, I wasn't even aware of the neighbor complaint, how it relates to that. So I'm just going off of our staff...
The one you were talking about was on this property?
And I believe we have a photo of that in the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office package. And to refer in the staff report, under the list for recommendations of denial... Bear with me, and I'll give you a page number. Page number three, there's three bullet points under section number two, and it states that it's in violation, the project 16, or excuse me, 16-601 is in violation of 17.95.170. On the bottom, there are three bullet points: human waste, open defecation, fertilizer, trash, and marijuana refuse. And the last bullet point is specific to the water diversion. I believe that concludes my comments on six, project 16-01. Can you go back to the photograph of the barn, please? To give you an understanding of, of this barn and how it was situated, if you were to step back away from this open door of the barn, some of the tents you saw with the sleeping, there were more or less a cover. There were people sleeping in there, and there were also people clearly sleeping inside of vehicles. So we're estimating there was at least six, and as many as 10 to 12 people sleeping just outside of this barn, both inside the barn and outside of this barn, that were tending to this area. And that would, that would kind of work in concert with the amount of food we saw in, in the area.
I do have some supplementary photographs that I would be happy to put up on the screen. I don't know if it would help explain what Catherine's talking about. There are other photographs that I can show you.
Why don't you just flip through them quickly so that we can at least acknowledge that we've seen them?
Okay.
Go back, please. One more? There. Oh, okay. It's just a downed fence. Okay.
I will close with this. Having gone to numerous marijuana cultivation sites, there are some that are clean, tidy, orderly, that appear at least to have some sort of close oversight and management to them. This was on the extreme opposite end of that. This was one of the more gross sites we've been to, in so much as there just appeared to be a free-for-all with people sleeping, defecating, doing what they want in all sorts of different locations. It really seemed to be kind of an out-of-control site. When we served the search warrant, there were numerous cars fleeing, people fleeing, vehicles driving recklessly downhill away from us. There was marijuana abandoned in the back of vehicles, where people just abandoned their vehicle, the truck bed full of marijuana, and fled off into, into the woods.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So would you like to come up and give your presentation now? Or did you all have any questions you needed to ask first?
No.
Want to go straight to the appellate?
Thanks.
Okay.
I do have some handouts, if that's, if that's okay.
Let's find, if you could pass them to Annette over here, that would be great.
I'll pass them to Paul.
Thank you.
My name is Talali Bytulala. Honorable and distinguished commissioners, I humbly come before you to appeal my cannabis grow site, project 601, parcel 39. Please excuse me as I am very nervous at this time. I'd like to thank Peter Moyer and the planning department for their unrelenting effort throughout this process. What an, what an undertaking for the planning department and commissioners to work on a cannabis cultivation urgency ordinance for more than two years. I give you credit. I applaud your efforts. I'd also like to thank Miguel Contreras for putting up with my continuous emails, my phone calls. He's probably so tired of me, that's why he's not here anymore. And poor Paul, and poor Paul has to deal with me. So, well, let me get to my story. Everyone has a story as to why they're a cannabis farmer. Mine is personal. My daughter has lupus. We've tried the heavy steroid regimen. This made her inflamed, depressed, and not herself. Her results with medical marijuana rendered such great information. I researched further, and it has become my passion, my life. She hasn't had a flare-up in almost two years. And she's happily married with twins. Excuse me. I make available for my girlfriend's son with grandma seizures. He's 27 years old. He's been seizing since he was 11. The oil reduced his seizures by 85 percent. He actually seized in the presence of myself and my children, and it was the scariest thing I've ever seen in my life. So my thinking is simple. If I can touch at least one person's life, I've done my job in my lifetime. But then I thought, why stop with one? And decided to try to help as many patients as I can. This is my drive. Why I do what I do. I'm on a crusade to help those in pain, all from the love of a mother to a daughter. If someone told me 10 years ago I'd be a cannabis cultivator, I'd be like, no way. There's absolutely no way. Now that I'm here, a pending registration cannabis cultivator for two years, you can imagine how still very naive I am in this business. My father told me, if you're going to do something right and make a difference in life, you better do it to the best of your ability. Hence, my trying to make all county deadlines, all requirements, all bases covered. My protective personal equipment, first aid kits, eye wash stations, safety manuals, safety goggles, pesticide suits, MSDS sheets, best management practices manual. I had all this available, yet I... I had all this available, yet I fell short. Finding some of the most simplest requirements weren't met at the standards of the county and state law. Sometimes I have to step back, take a breath, and realize I'm only human. Rome was not built in a day, and just try to keep trying. The industry is still very much in the shadows, from being taboo to take pictures of your cannabis garden for fear you might get into trouble, to searching high and low for a picture with a timestamp for my Calaveras County application. Now I take pictures of my gardens every week, in every stage of growing, just in case the county needs a picture. But it just kind of looks bad, you know, cannabis pictures amongst my family pictures as I'm swiping right. But it's the business, it's the nature of the beast. I found farming is tough, cannabis cultivation even tougher. Every board of supervisors meeting, CCA meetings, water board meeting, Department of Ag meetings, I'm still learning. From what I observe, I have found we are creating a culture in Calaveras County, a cannabis farmer culture. One that offers educated, well-spoken, well-informed, hard-working business owners whose passion is to farm. The farmers of Calaveras are always nice, willing to help, and upstanding citizens. This journey has been a learning process for all of us, farmers, neighbors, community, and county. I've tried my hardest to stay organized, stay abreast of all changing laws, cannabis-related news, meetings, farming requirements. In addition to those requirements, I have to run a business, get my marketing bottling, labeling up to speed, so please excuse my ignorance, I'm still learning. I have included an action plan, which I distributed to you, flow chart for Project six oh one, of the immediate needs by which I was denied. I will research, find the answers, contact the county departments to comply by all county and state laws. In my rebuttal to the staff report, I have included a list of action items by which I want to implement on my farm. I feel it's maybe borderline paranoia, but after I've been through, this level of trust for anyone is non-existent. On the second page of the handout, please find the employee intake protocol I am to implement, which include background check, abiding by state local laws, driver's license, social security card, green card holder, migrant worker, immigrant working permit, these documents must be presented. Drug testing. Now, if you test positive for cannabis, it's okay, you know, I just don't want to mess with the other stuff. Health, dental, vision insurance options where applicable, DMV driver's license background check if driving a company vehicle. Heavy equipment operator, if you're driving a forklift or a bobcat, you need to be licensed or sent to training. Require mandatory paid trainings every six months. Now you're probably wondering why I didn't implement these as of yet. I am only one person, and every farmer knows, in this business, you're broke until harvest. You have nothing until harvest. Every penny is accounted for and budgeted for before harvest. I was almost there at harvest to afford to bring on a human resource person, an accountant, and an office manager to start, but just didn't make it in time to bring these business goals to fruition. I took on this project not knowing what I got myself into. The handout offered with the collage of pictures included. This is what I walked into upon securing my lease in two thousand sixteen. These, there was a previous grower on the property before I took over. Google Maps helped me pinpoint at least fourteen cannabis sites from two thousand fifteen on this property. I've cleaned four of these sites from the previous grower. Then, of course, I had to clean my own three sites, so I was busy. So I have seven more sites to try to clean, remediate the previous growers' plots. I care for the environment, that's what I'm about. There's still so much cleaning to do, but it takes time, money, man-hours, trips to the dumps to make this process efficient. My plans for six oh one are to install an additional portable toilet on-site as the one on forty-one is too far to meet the agricultural requirements. The proper hand-washing station equipped with soap and single-use paper towels. Better water receptacle with single-use cups. When affordable, you know, slowly but surely improving the land. When affordable, I'd like to apply for a septic permit for a more accommodating break room, kitchen, and bathroom facility. When affordable, I'd like to build a permitted residence on-site to provide the twenty-four-hour surveillance the planning department suggests. When affordable, I'd like to look into solar as my first choice to run a totally green site. My future plans for this parcel of land was to create a refuge, a retreat, one I could in the future offer safe and secure cannabis tours. I was told by Courtney in code compliance, I'm not the first one to think of this idea. From his inspection summary, he stated my desire to make my farm a resort. I would have some bungalows available for rent, all permitted, of course. Somewhere, somewhere someone could just take time away from life, relax, and enjoy the scenery. Maybe some organic spa treatments, celebrity chef debut, all on this beautiful piece of land. I wanted this farm to be a fully self-sustaining, as green as can be, eco-friendly location with zero carbon footprint harm to the environment. I was going to grow my own food, raise a few chickens and farm animals, all with permits, of course. An all-natural environment. I was also going to offer these bungalows in the off-season to those suffering with ailments such as cancer, AIDS, lupus, epilepsy, PTSD, and the like, for free. My husband said, we're never going to make money. I tell him, you know, we're so blessed to be able to grow in Calaveras and offer this relief for people, it'll come back to us tenfold. I love being a farmer in Calaveras County. Please allow me to right my wrongs. I'll strictly follow my immediate action plan and end the action list sent in the staff report rebuttal and the proper workforce protocol. I ask with the evidence provided, my rebuttals, the questions to be answered, that you continue to allow me to grow in this beautiful county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm sure the commissioners have a few questions for you.
I have quite a few.
Okay, go ahead and start.
Okay, the applicant here is Ken I Help You Inc., correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
You're the president?
I am, Commissioner Rooster.
And the landowner is AK Buildings and Coatings Inc.?
Yes, sir.
And Ali Fleti, I can't pronounce it.
Ali Fleti.
A V R T. Okay. Who's the shareholders of the owner?
Of-
Who owns, who owns AK Buildings and Coatings?
That is Ali Fleti Vaitulala, he's the president.
Okay, now are you and he related?
Yes, he is my brother-in-law.
Brother-in-law, okay. And so AK Buildings and Coatings owns these, all three parcels?
This is correct.
And when did AK Buildings and Coatings acquire those parcels?
I believe it was sometime in two thousand fifteen, I'm not for certain. He purchased it, I had nothing to do with it until two thousand sixteen, when I leased it.
Okay, there's a, the letter in our file from Barnett Environmental dated June twenty-seventh of two thousand sixteen.
Yes, sir.
Shows you got a copy. Was your company a client of Barnett Environmental?
This is correct.
Okay. Was, was there anything in that letter from Barnett Environmental, June twenty-seventh of two thousand sixteen, that you believed was incorrect?
I'd have to reread it, sorry, I've been a little consumed with so many letters and numbers, and I'd have to reread it. Was there a concern of yours that-
Well, let's, let's take up some of the things there. It says that you have been conducting cannabis activities prior to October two of two thousand fifteen, is that correct?
There was a previous grower on-site, so those locations were actually, I guess, in use. I guess that's what I would gather.
And when did you start conducting cannabis activity?
My lease was secured May sixth, two thousand sixteen.
So it was after that?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, this, this letter says that there were thirteen sites on these three parcels, with ninety-nine plants per site. And so that you would need to consolidate to the total allowed for three sites, which would be sixty-six thousand square feet, is that correct?
This is correct, yes, sir.
You got a, you got a lease on all three parcels on January one, two thousand seventeen?
Yes, sir.
And that's for agricultural purposes?
Yes.
That lease doesn't give the landlord the right to let anybody else grow on that property, does it?
And this is where there is, I guess, a gray area where I was stuck between a rock and a hard place, and there was absolutely nothing I could do.
Well-
I mean, he is the owner, and I could have, I mean, he wrote a letter. He said he would be here for this hearing, but he, he's not here. So he could better answer any questions with regards to any of the illegal grows on the hill. So I, I don't know anything about what has happened or transpired, if there was a sublease involved with regards to that property on the hill, that piece on the hill, four forty-one.
There's been some evidence that there was a water diversion coming from your neighbor's property down to this particular site on six oh one. Do you have any comment on that?
I have not seen, I've, I saw the pictures that were offered to me, but I have no knowledge of any water diversion on the property.
Your appeal letter, November sixth of this year, says you have a portable restroom always available for use for all on your property, correct? That's, that was one toilet, right?
Yes, correct.
And that was for all three parcels?
Correct.
And it was located on forty-one?
Yes, sir.
The staff report says that's about a third of mile from the cultivation area on thirty-nine, is that correct?
Yes, and as I, as I expressed, some of the most simplest things that could have been remedied, that's where I failed and faltered. And with my action plan, I would, I want to install a portable there, hand-washing stations, everything that the county and code compliance would require.
What, what did you do, if anything, to ensure that your employees used the toilet that you did provide?
I, and this is where you would suspect that someone would use the restroom, and you shouldn't have to, you know, follow people to see exactly where they're going or what they're doing, or- So I, and in the action plan that I proposed, this is where I would, I guess personally, myself and my manager, be able to inspect the site, go throughout it just to ensure that no one else is doing that same thing for future reference. It's, and I, I take these environmental issues so serious, there's, there's no excuse for this. And I must admit, open defecation on my watch, it's my fault. But, you know, if you're, I go through mayhem control. And after getting abated, and just, it was just the most amazing feeling I've ever seen, shock, depression, you know, I woke up and I said, let's do mayhem control. What can I do to remedy this issue? What can I do to try and just put forth a good effort to make people believe in what I, what I believe in?
Mr. Grow presented a number of points, including the deficiencies in the hand-washing and the drinking facilities, the camping and the sheltering, the unpermitted barn, the tent that got put up without a permit. Do you have any specific comments on any of those points?
A comment about the Ken Johnson picture, the one with the tent, for starters. If you look in the collage of pictures that I offered in the handout, I think you'll see the same tent, or for that matter. When I, when I was allowed back onto my property after the sheriff's office, you know, abated me, I, I saw no, no signs of that same tent or that tent area in which it was referenced in the Ken Johnson picture. So I suspect that that may have been from the grower previous in two thousand fifteen. In terms of Sabrina's comment about not being able to see the grow, I just wasn't ready. I'm a little OCD, I want to make sure all the trash is picked up, and, you know, just everything tight and right before any planned inspection was available. With regards to the, on thirty-nine, there's a picture. With regards to trash and fertilizer dump, it's further out south of the property, which I was unsure where exactly it was, nor did the sheriff's office offer a picture with regards to that particular site. So I was just kind of curious, could it have been something from the previous grower? I'm unsure. But our fertilizer or pesticides, everything's locked away in a metal cabinet. I have those safely stowed. With regards to Mr. Ken Johnson's concern, the environment is a concern for me as well. And I want, I'd like to, I've never met him before, I don't know if he's here. Oh, hi, how are you? I've never met him before, and if I could try and pick up the pieces and make things work where it's a happy, happy neighbor relation, I'd love to do so, if, if allowed.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to say, when I first saw the pictures of the site, it made my stomach turn. You have not explained any of the photos, the photos of the barn. How often are you on this, how often are you at your own site, your own grow?
I'm not there on a daily basis, whereas when we're in the grow season, I'd go there, turn on the water for a few hours to water my plants, then you turn it off. Go leave, lock the gate, and that's it.
So these people were obviously living on your site.
It, it, it looks horrible.
They were living in the barn, and you're telling me you never saw that, you didn't-
Well, my manager was there from the twenty-seventh, he left. And I was in and out, in some cases, I went and went straight to my garden. I wasn't able to go to the barn, you know, and it's my fault, I should have been more vigilant to see exactly what's going on on my site. Were they camping? Oh my gosh, those, those pictures look pretty grim. And in terms of camping, yes, I, it's horrible. But if allowed, if I can, you know, clean it up and hopefully try to nail down a date to have code compliance come in, re-inspect, I'd appreciate the chance to see if in fact I can become that stellar registrant again.
My issue with that is, when you knew code compliance was coming, you obviously went out there and cleaned up the property. They had an appointment with you, you cleaned the property. Thirteen days later, when they went back, it looked like a third world country, according to them. So you knew it was happening, you went and cleaned your property.
Well, I just-
They went back thirteen days later, you had to have seen something thirteen days before in order to clean it. You knew what to clean. Thirteen days go by, and it goes back to looking like a third world country, I have an issue with that.
And, and I don't blame you for feeling that way, I, I don't. The cards are stacked against me, I, there's no explanation for that.
Another thing you said today that's irking me. You said that you're going to, you would like to, in, on your new plan, drug testing, but it would be okay to smoke pot.
I was just-
Then you said that you were going to let people, you have heavy-duty equipment on your property. So these people who are smoking pot are going to be able to drive the tractors and the equipment, that's heavy-duty equipment, but you're going to let them do it with high?
I, I was being more, sorry, that maybe I shouldn't let my humor come into play, you know. If I wasn't, if, if I wasn't just putting just a little bit of humor, I'd be crying for this whole time.
This is not humorous.
Oh, very, very correct. I, I guess this is where you would have to know me. It's, it's hard for me because it's either I'll be crying this whole time, or, you know, I can, well, you know, drug testing, I, sorry, and I do apologize. It, it was more of a little humor, and it is a serious fact, and I do apologize for that.
So, okay. I'm going to let it go.
I keep coming back to a visual that I've gotten from this testimony today, and the visual is the sheriff driving onto the property and all these people fleeing. Some in cars, some running through the bushes. Why were they fleeing?
When, and this is, I guess, the nature of this business, which is still in the shadows, which I'm still trying to get used to. You have people who were referred to you who are trimmers. And granted, you know, it's still a semi-quasi-illegal, you know, and maybe they are illegal immigrants. And they, they're, they probably ran because they're scared. They're scared, plain and simple.
They probably were illegal immigrants or they were illegal immigrants?
Well, I did not have any independent contracting contracts. I was trying to get to that point with making enough money for my harvest to, in order to implement those systems in place.
How many people did you employ?
I have my manager and I have two ranch hands. And then in terms of the trimmers that show up, of whom I was never, I never worked with them. I worked with trimmers last year, but they weren't available. So the new trimmers that came on site, I didn't know them. And so they, everyone just ran, everyone ran.
How many trimmers were there?
On parcel thirty-nine, there were four to five. On parcel forty-one, there were five.
Commissioner Vitale, did you still have questions?
No more.
On this document that you submitted.
Yes, sir.
By Barnett Environmental. On page eleven, it has a schedule of best management practices.
Yes, sir.
Including culvert.
Culvert repair.
Repair and mechanical, chemical storage, et cetera, et cetera. All with an implementation date of eleven one twenty sixteen.
Yes, sir. I've repaired.
Were these all implemented?
I repaired two culverts, repaired the road, just, you know, putting some rocks just to ensure that the driveway was nicely built. But yes, sir, and I, yeah.
Okay. And as far as the, the input we've received from Ken Johnson, when I compared the picture of the camping that he provided with the picture on your collage, I don't see the tent, the tent that's on your collage is predominantly blue with red stripes, and I don't see anything like that on his. So I don't think that's, that's an explanation.
What I probably should have done, which I wasn't thinking, was when I re-entered the site on the night of the fifth, I should have taken pictures so that at least I have a reference point to see where was what and when.
Yeah, and he mentions that it was later moved out of his site. But it's not, there's no indication that it was the previous growers. And as far as his allegations that water was, was taken from a pond on his property, or a spring pond, and piped onto your land. When you received this, you didn't go out to the property to see if you could see the pipes that he's talking about?
When I received Ken Johnson's letter?
Yeah.
I received Ken Johnson's letter on December eleventh, which was the day that I was, that I received the staff report. And although, sorry. I apologize, I was kind of busy trying to get my rebuttal and my presentation ready. I have not been able to go out to the property.
So you just don't, you don't know anything about that?
No, absolutely not.
And you've never noticed the pipes coming from that direction?
Not at all, no, sir.
I'm just curious about all the water lines that were all connected, running to several different grows. And you say those were not yours, they belonged to somebody else, but they were all connected to the same water line going in different directions?
Yes. So in terms of the water, can I use your pointer? So here we have thirty-nine. And there's a well right here, oops. Yeah, a well right here, thirty-nine. That is fed to the thirty-nine plot between April and July. After, after July, oh, sorry. Yeah, April through July, the hot season. After that, we connect thirty-nine to forty-one. This has been such a good well for us. Forty to fifty gallons per minute. In terms of any of the water lines, this one well feeds one, two, my three sites, one, two, three.
Okay, but there's one of the maps that shows a lot more than three grows.
Yes, they're referencing the illegal grows that were up top, where it reads water diversion here, water diversion here, of which this is the grow in question I was not responsible for.
But it was using your water lines and your well?
It was using, it was using this one well.
Okay, do you suspect that to be your manager that was doing that?
No, no. Do you want me to go through this now or wait till forty-one is, with regards to?
We'll do it when we get to forty-one, because I don't want to confuse the two. My next question is that you had talked about, Can I Help You Corporation, that you had a daughter with lupus and that you were helping other people with grand mal seizures and that you make the oils and products. Are you manufacturing on the property?
No, ma'am.
Where are you doing the oils at?
I send it to a lab to have it made, you know, made for it, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, I think that's all my questions is. So if nobody has any further questions, I'd like to go to the public comment, if we could, please. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Sorry, get my luggage out of the way.
I noticed you're hobbling before you get up. We're speaking directly to this appeal and that is what you're speaking to? Okay, good. Just didn't want to make you all the way over there.
My name's Virginia Franklin. And my perspective, listening to what's going on in this particular case, I have three forty-acre parcels that I've owned for forty years. I had people who wanted to grow on them. I wouldn't allow it because it was unmanageable, especially the first year. And as a responsible property owner, I chose to do a test run the first year to see how it would work out. I had people wanting to violate all of the ordinance from one end to the other with regard to bringing on their workers who were also growing their own plants, living on the place, which they didn't get the permits for trailers and that sort of thing, although I tried to help them do that. All of the problems that I observed in this hearing were totally able to be circumvented by my own work of saying no and going to the planning department, asking for their help, which I was unable to get, going to the sheriff's department, asking for their help, which I was unable to get, and finally, I got a restraining order. And I don't see any reason why we have people coming in here shitting all over our county, literally.
Sorry, you have to control.
Use the proper language, defecating all over our county. I've got cancer. I had a double mastectomy just prior to all this going down. My place burnt down in the bug fire. I got a staph infection on my first chemotherapy. I was in the hospital for two weeks.
I'm gonna stop you for one second because.
But I was able to prevent all of this same kind of thing that was here. I had Josh Crabtree come out, he said I was the cleanest farm he's seen in the county. But I can't get a hearing. And I'm hearing other people come up here who've totally trashed the place. And they're getting all kinds of support from.
I have to stop you for one second here.
I understand.
Okay, I need you to speak specific to this agenda item, not to yours, because.
I say there's no excuse. If you're managing a farm like this, and I'm sicker than a dog and I have a two fifteen doctor's appointment in Sacramento that I'm trying to get to, why can I accomplish that with everybody working against me? And yet, here's a person with managers and all this other stuff. I do resent that. I'm a forty-year resident here and I fought off meth labs, people stealing my water, violating my property, but I get no support, but here I see people coming up asking for all kinds, with all kinds of excuses and all the medical people there trying to help.
So what you're, what you're telling me is, is you're speaking against this appeal, you're telling us to deny her?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your comments.
I can't stay any longer. I want to do a public comment and I want to get a hearing, but I have a two fifteen doctor's appointment, it's taken me months to get, and I have to go to it.
Okay.
So I don't know how, have you received the letter I sent you all?
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't the time, but.
When is the time? When can I get the time?
If you would like five minutes at the next public comment period, you need to be here at the very beginning at nine AM.
Okay, I'll be fast.
So, okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Ken Johnson. I'm the neighbor right next door that sent you the report on this. And probably just want to answer any questions you guys might have about, about the photos or what have you. I gotta tell you though, I've watched this since two thousand fifteen when the name that was given to me when, when they moved in, it was Frederick and Al Bano were the two people that bought it. I don't know if that's a nickname or what have you. They're AK builders. They're the people that bought those three parcels. Very nice guy, actually really only dealt with Freddie, that was his name. But he's the one that ran the businesses and the grow sites since the inception. And obviously, I think, related to the family. The situation that you saw in the pictures that I sent, and especially the ones in the sheriff's report, that is the state, the normal state out there. That's what it looks like most of the time. If it was cleaned up for a particular hearing, it was cleaned up. We see it all the time, trash blows all over the place onto our place. The roads get hammered by water trucks, like the first year, and it's not you, because you weren't there the first year, apparently. But whoever was growing that first year that built all these sites up on the hill, they drilled one well where she mentioned down on parcel thirty-nine, probably drove it dry, because they were driving in at that point ten trucks a day, big water trucks onto the property, and they go through our place to get there. The roads got absolutely destroyed during that time, and I remember calling Freddie and saying, Freddie, the roads are, the trees can't photosynthesize, there's so much dust on them at this point in time along this road, because they come in ten a day. And we don't live out there, but my neighbor across the street tells me everything that's going on out there. And she sees people going in all the time, and they camp there really from January, February, all the way through harvest. They're there all the time, some number of people. And the defecation and the toilet situation that you see in those pictures, that is the normal state as you go out there. That's what's going on. Now, the tents that you saw, I could point on the thing here where the fertilizer pile was, the laser pointer. Yeah, the map is a good.
Okay, I just want to warn you that you are being timed as a public speaker, so I don't want you to run out of time.
No, 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 I'm with you, and you think I know how to use the laser pointer, but.
It's got a red crying along there.
There you go. There we go. Okay, so this is where, right here is where that big fertilizer pile was, right? Put in there, right on the road, it's called a cattle trap, right there. Where the tents were that I showed you were right here. So it's different probably than the ones that were captured by the sheriff's department. The water diversion was down here. The first, the big one that we had, that had the two big pipes, they tapped two different ponds going directly, and I took the photos and drug them, they went over into this site here, big grow sites here. The second one I showed you, and it was just this year, I mean, a month ago, when I went out there, on the sixteenth of November, after our big rains, it was tapped up right about here, going into these grows over here. So the water taps are very real, they're very frequent, and they happened this year. It is, it happened on your watch, from somebody. So anyway, I just wanted to give you that perspective, please.
At least one of those taps is on your property, is that correct?
Both were.
Both were. We're on this, can you show us where your property line is?
So I kind of go along this creek here. So it's, our property is really everything below this, this creek here. We actually, Freddie had it surveyed, and virtually all of this creek is on our property from the survey point. So really, think of this blue line backwards as really all of our property.
And how visible from your property line is the place where the public defecation was going in and?
In the past, it was very visible, it was all along, really, they headquartered out of here, they built that barn up there, and that became the central site, and they moved to a spot over here where they had a lot of grows going on. There was a series of grows here, and then this big grow that's going on here, so.
But down, down on the site that we're worried about right now, which is the lower one?
This one here, yeah.
Yeah, you can, from your property, you can see these conditions that are happening.
Yes, we can, and again, it's all along this creek here, there's garbage, there was a ton of garbage near the well. They built kind of a ramshackle building over the top of the well. A lot of that came off and blew into the creek and blew over into the property. And there's, again, defecation all along here as you go through these fields from this. Same thing up here, so, sorry, I'm out of time.
You're okay, he's asking you questions, so it's fine.
And I encourage you to stick around for the next hearing.
I'm here, I made the drive from Silicon Valley up, so.
Did you, did you file any reports for water coming out of the creek?
We did, yeah, so we did file, we went to initially, we've worked with the sheriff's department, who's been just wonderful to deal with, you know. And then we went, we were told to go to the water board, so I went to the water board and filed a complaint there back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. We never really heard what happened from that, and tried to talk to them about the diversions, tried to talk to them about all these things. They were, again, very nice people and tried to help us, but we never heard anything that went on. The first time we saw real action was this abatement that happened in October. We didn't even know the abatement was happening. We read about it in the newspaper, believe it or not, and my neighbor said, hey, I think they raided the place behind you that's been the problem for you all along. And that's where we read about this stuff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, thanks.
Appreciate you coming today. Okay. We'll give you five minutes.
Just one point that was kind of clear to me, that the water diversion matters. Those are seasonal stream beds, therefore, that was not new. You wouldn't have no need to tap those, you don't tap a dry stream bed, nor do you build a reservoir in a dry stream bed. So that was, that predated the thirteen days, so that was clearly going on prior to the inspection by code enforcement.
Thank you. Okay, any further public comment?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Calling Flat Miami Valley Springs and Calaveras Planning Coalition. We don't normally speak on these, we just watch you do your good job, but we do have some comments on this one. We're pretty dismayed by the environmental damages done on this property. The appellant is in control of the property, they have a lease for the property. They are responsible for these parcels, they have a lease for all of the parcels. We're pretty shocked that there's no toilet on this parcel. You know, it's a pretty large parcel for not to have a toilet on it and to expect your workers to walk all the way to an adjoining parcel to use the toilet. The water diversions are pretty obvious, there seems to be evidence all over the place of illegal water diversions. And as Commissioner Wooster pointed out, a well was supposed to be the source, the only source of water for all of these grows, but this one also. And it's been connected to adjacent grows and seasonal streams, and that's pretty dismaying. The appellant had clear knowledge of the prior, what was it, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen grows on the property. They had their environmental consultant analyze the property. They were informed and told of the need to consolidate and get rid of all. rid of all those grows and just go down to three grows on three parcels. I don't see how they could be growing there for a year and a half and not know that those grows were continuing and were not eradicated, and it had not been consolidated, especially with the, the trails and the water lines and the connections between all of the grows. As I said, the parcel said that she leased all of these areas. So to me, that, you know, puts that under her responsibility in addition to the owner. I don't know, you're the legal people, you know who's responsible. But if you lease the whole parcel, it seems to me you're responsible for it. So basically, I support the denial because this applicant's grows are out of control. It looks like negligence to me, all of these activities. And this happened on her watch, so she is responsible for this. So we actually come out against this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Why don't we go to rebuttal real quick for both of you? It's getting to be one o'clock. Are you guys doing okay?
Yeah.
Okay, well then, let's go ahead and wrap this one up.
Just a few comments. Mr. Wooster asked about when AK acquired the parcel. This parcel was acquired, recorded on December thirtieth of 2014, into AK's possession. I think the appellant mentioned that she received the staff report on December eleventh. Actually, that was sent to her on December fifth. That was the Tuesday I was talking to. It went to you, and it went to her on the same day. Given the opportunity to explain her control of the parcel and who the ghost growers are, I think we kind of got a fudge there. And there's no way to, I think, although this applies to six oh three, I don't think there's any way to support the credibility that she does not know who was up there cultivating. She mentioned in reference to cannabis culture that all the farmers are nice and willing to help. If there's a different farmer up on six oh three, in that culture, it sure seems like being nice and being willing to help, you would know your neighbor up there.
I.
I'm sorry, comment. The, yeah, the idea, I reiterate Paul's point, that the idea that the thirteen separate grows are unconnected to her activities is just implausible. And I would also point out that the president of AK Builders is also the agent for service and process for Can I Help You? So I think that there's more interconnectedness here than, than she's really coming forward with, and that together, they are completely responsible for all cultivation, all thirteen sites on those parcels.
Paul, at one point during testimony, it was indicated that she leased those lands January 2017, just a year ago?
The initial lease was on May sixth of 2016. In that lease, she leases one acre of land on each individual parcel.
Okay.
That release was renewed by both parties on January first of 2017. At that time, she gains control of all of, all three parcels.
Okay, instead of just one acre, and that was the reason?
No, it's completely different. At the beginning of this year, she has complete control of everything on all three parcels.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions for Paul before I go back to the appellant? Okay. You want to come up and have any rebuttal on the public comment?
Thank you, distinguished commissioners. I appreciate your time. With regards to the comment, as Ali Faleti being my service agent, I was at a state. He signed up for my company, and I then turned everything to me. It was just a matter of my not being in the state. So in terms of his having anything to do with my business, he has none. So I just wanted to make that clear. I understand that it's the commissioners and planning department who are the ones that set the standards for us, for us growers. There's no excuse for what happened. And the lady said it was negligence. And yes, the onus was all on me. And these are very, very serious charges. I don't take this lightly at all. This is my life. This is my passion. And unfortunately, I just fell short. So if you were to look in terms, tunnel vision, just me, before we head to forty-one with regards to illegal water version, water diversion, illegal grows on the hill, maybe it would shed a little bit of light in terms of, hey, you know what? She's, she's just trying to make the best of what she has, which are my three parcels. And I guess this is where I falter at being so new at the business. I, I wish I had been a twenty-year grower. Maybe that would have made a difference in terms of what I, what plan or system I should have had in place. Maybe in the new permanent ordinance, if it is so passed, you would allow someone to reapply, if that would be a possibility. But I ask you to vote based on some of the accomplishments that I've made. I've made all the deadlines. I've done everything that I was asked to do, and not the failures. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close it off to the public, bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation. Who'd like to start?
Well, I'll start.
Okay.
I find this literally to be sickening to look at these pictures, and to think that there are growers in this county that are doing things right, and that have all these responsibilities, and are looking out for their property. They're being considerate of their neighbors. And this is an example, I would say, an example of what can happen on illegal grows. And the fact that this is a regulated grow is, I find it almost overwhelming. I, I cannot see any reason for any arguing, any chance or excuse to what has happened on this property. And that's where I stand.
I think the applicant herself has admitted just now, and a few other comments earlier, that she was negligent. That's her word. She said she fell short. She said there's no excuse for it. And somehow, she kept saying, I take these environmental issues seriously. I don't think you do. I think, I think the evidence has shown you don't take it seriously. You haven't. Even your action plan talks about doing things in the future. You've known about these problems for an awfully long time. There's just no way we can, I, I could possibly vote in your favor. And one more comment. It seems like this is the type of grow that's making the whole process of regulating, if that's where we're going, almost eliminating the possibility of having regulations that make sense. That's a ban it argument, which I generally don't support. But this type of situation is, is the worst possible. That's all I have.
I'm just going to agree with the two commissioners.
Well, I've, I've read all the materials and listened to everything. I don't see any real rebuttal to any of the violation points the staff has presented, each and every one of them. Her future plans may be good, but we have to deal with the past here. There is one, one point I should bring up, though, and that is, probably best to focus on the resolution to make it. If you look at the resolution, page two, paragraph three at the bottom, where it quotes seventeen point nine five point one seven oh eight two, says, "Other violations of federal, state, or local law, other than cannabis-related activities recognized as legal by the state of California, are occurring on the parcel, et cetera." It's actually not the parcel. It's any parcel, if you look at the urgency ordinance. What that means, then, is that this commission is entirely considered violations that take place on forty-one, and considering grounds for denial on this one. And another ground for denial is failure to comply with the requirements of this chapter. That's under seventeen point nine five point one seven oh eight one. So if you have failure to comply with the requirements of this chapter, like growing when you're not registered on forty-one, that's equally a ground for denial for thirty-nine. And so my suggestion would be that we not finalize a resolution with respect to thirty-nine until we have considered forty-one, because these, the ordinance makes it, so the two can be connected and probably should be.
I agree. I agree. Does, does anybody else feel the same way? Do we have three, three to pull from? Okay, we do.
Yeah.
Okay. So on that note, I'd like to leave this hearing open until we finish on forty-one, and then we can vote separately on each appeal, but we may need to do some amendments to the resolution. Everybody's good with that?
Yes.
Okay, on that note, let's go to lunch, and we'll re-adjourn at two o'clock.